Okay, thank you. We'll bring the meeting to order here at 7:00 on Tuesday, July 2nd. And our first matter is a public hearing. This is regarding Chappaqua Crossing, SGP USPFV. It's like one of those eye exams. Chappaqua Retail Owner LLC requests to amend the conditions of a prior approval. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing? Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Weingarten. I'm a partner in the law firm of Del Bello, Don Allen, Weingarten, Weizen, Whittaker. My pleasure to be here this evening representing SGP USPFV Chappaqua Retail Owner LLC.
Easy for you to say.
In connection with the retail component on the property located at 480 Bedford Road and 1521 3157 Roaring Brook Road, New Castle, New York, also referred to commonly as Chappaqua Crossing. I hope everybody has had the opportunity at this point to join Lifetime Fitness and not show up at the gym for a couple of months, because that's how they make their money.
Good for traffic, that way.
In December of last year, your board and the town board approved the resolution amending certain conditions of approval, which permitted the deferral of certain permanent traffic improvements and instead substituted the implementation of an interim MPT plan as a condition for the issuance of TCOs for a portion of the retail component of Chappaqua Crossing, including Whole Foods and Chase Bank. In January and February this year, as a result of the applicant's subsequent request, your board and the town board granted permission for the issuance of TCOs for Lifetime Fitness, Chase, Fidelity Investments, and Pet Value. The same approval was granted last month for the retail store Rocks. Now that these stores have been open and operating, your professionals have had the opportunity to observe the actual as opposed to projected environmental impacts, and the vast majority of the required conditions have been or will shortly be satisfied, we are requesting the issuance of temporary certificates of occupancy to open the balance of the retail component, which is approximately 20,000 feet, which is left, provided that the T intersection at Roaring Brook Road and Route 117 are completed. We are also requesting the opening of the balance of the office component, excluding the space deferred in your prior findings statement, the town board findings statement as well as your own, and again, with the same condition that the permanent traffic improvements be physically finished. And we are requesting to renew or extend the existing TCOs beyond July 9 to permit the continuing operation of the existing retail, such as Whole Foods and Lifetime Fitness. The town board did approve this identical request of these three items last week. We are also requesting of your board to modify Condition Number 59 of the retail site plan, which requires the applicant to cooperate in the opening of certain onsite trails. We are asking to delay this requirement from the existing temporary CFO for the retail to the point of final CFO for the East Village for actually safety reasons, as we don't wish to have people traversing those trails while there is construction going on, we hope, over in the East Village as we finish out the project. Those are the basics of our requests. I'm happy to go through any of the conditions that you would like to go through, if there are any that lead you to any level of concern. The balance of the conditions, aside from the permanent traffic improvements, which we are suggesting as a continuous condition for this, though that will be finished, we believe, by July 20, so it's only a few weeks away, and we're willing to wait for that. Certainly, most of the conditions that are left at that point then will be things like paperwork that need to be filed, ASBIL surveys that need to be finished, and things of that nature, that we can't do quite this time. And there's bonding that is still in the hands of the town, which eventually, hopefully we'll get those bonds back, et cetera, to finish out as well. But that is the most of the conditions. If there are any specific ones you'd like to know status, I would be happy to talk to you about those.
So how will we determine the completion of the intersection? I believe there's language in here about the town's commissioner of public works and a town engineer. Do, how much longer is it before we actually hear or get something from the state normally?
I honestly can't, I believe it's a couple of months before the actual physical documentation is finished, is what I believe I heard Dave Walsh say at our last meeting.
But Bob, we have a high level of assurance that we'll be okay?
Before Jerry and I make any decision, we're gonna need a written letter from New York State DOT, not the applicant, that the roadway is substantially complete and they have no objection to its issuing. That's one comment I had on this.
Okay. So that's not necessarily a permit. It's just a letter of what, of intent, that everything will be completed?
Confirmation from-
The New York State DOT makes that call.
It's not a letter of intent, it's a letter indicating from DOT that they are satisfied with the deliverable of the off-site road.
Right. And does that close the construction permit with DOT?
No.
They still paperwork.
Okay, paperwork, okay. But the physical work would be completed at that point?
Well, we would either from Ander, Dorelia, or Lees, or the State Permit Division.
Shouldn't we have that in resolution?
I think so.
Yes.
Well, it is.
It's part of the course of action, I mean, with every project.
I think what's, it's, there's sufficient language that would contemplate that. The difficulty I see is I don't want to have a resolution that's inconsistent with the town board adopted at this point. So I think it's sufficient to note, as part of the minutes, that what is going to be expected to satisfy this condition is a letter from DOT, not the applicant.
It's not a timeframe.
Right. So the letter from DOT will trigger the review by DPW and town engineer?
Well, it's to the town's determination is when we're finished.
Communication to the town, and then the town's approval.
You don't know, they'll, the state will make the call when they feel their road is done. Not the applicant, not Jerry, not I.
Correct. But it's not the state that's gonna tell us that we get our TCO. It's the town that does.
Right. The town will not issue any more TCOs for any work unless we have documentation from the state, as reviewed by the town engineer, and the commissioner of public works, that the work has been done.
It's not a big item.
It is normal process. It is normal process for our office.
We get it all the time for VPs, for COs, but it always comes from the state.
Well, and we want to make sure the applicant understands just that point, and that could be a two-month delay, and if something is not right, you know, then, you know, July becomes October very quickly, and November, everything shuts down again.
And I'm sure they have certain punchless items that they'd like to see completed, that they would make some judgment calls to see if they were to use that letter, if not, we'll have to wait till they're ready.
Yeah, just, if I can put in the record, most often times, the delay that the community sees in development projects, whether it is adding a new store downtown, a project like this, it is not due to town processes, it is due to other agencies, more specifically the Westchester County Department of Health and the New York State DOT. We will not delay or drag our feet, it is really the other agencies who have approval authorities. We must wait for them to have sign-off, and we are, we, our hands are tied in pressuring them to move quicker.
Please don't leave Con Edison out of that, but basically on this particular project, but-
Well, he's not involved right just yet.
I have to issue some praise for Con Ed. We had a branch of someone, a neighbor's tree fall across the road in the afternoon, yesterday afternoon, it was a big branch, no traffic allowed, wires were very, in a very tenuous situation, and the good news is that by 2:30 a.m., they had the whole thing, the road open and all the wiring fixed. The bad news is, we couldn't sleep.
I only raise it because the specific, one of the reasons we're asking for the temporary CFOs to be extended, and we aren't finished at this point, but the major reason was that a line that was in the road that Con Edison installed was installed at the improper depth.
Right.
And they had to come, and it took weeks for them to get there and move the line, because it was their responsibility, and we could not do our work until they did that. There was no way to know until we opened the road, so that's why I made the call.
Right, right.
Well, I don't have a problem with the TCOs at all. I do have a concern that this project is such that there are always surprises, and I can't imagine there won't be further delays beyond the estimate that you gave as to when something would be finished, and it bothers me.
Well, the TCOs are going-
Going to November.
This extends it out to November 12.
For the TCOs, yeah.
But only for what?
Then nothing else can happen.
But no new ones.
It won't happen until the DOT signs off on it.
Just so I understand from you, that November 12 date, is that when you expect all the items in the matrix to be done together?
That's what we've been told, but I think that's the, is the six month, I don't know, we didn't pick that date.
It's a six month.
It's a six month date from the expiration, which is what your code provides.
Actually, it's four months.
Four months, it's gonna expire next week.
It was a little more than four months, July 9th is the current date, and we got it ran until holiday and weekend, so that we extended it out until Tuesday.
That's where the date comes from. But we've been told the fall, some of that relies outside our control by the state finishing the permits and all the rest, but we would hope to be, certainly in our interest, and as we've pointed out with all these other issues, we're also still in front of your board as well as others on the East Village, we're not going anywhere.
But Bob, you mentioned, you were talking about the other issues in your matrix.
Our matrix, they finished 10 out of 43.
So we're-
10?
That's a quarter, less than a quarter. Yeah, not much. I better check.
So that's an issue for you for November, it seems to me.
Yeah, no, I mean-
It was 10, I circulated it only to you and everyone.
I think that's the main point, that's the main takeaway for tonight.
The main takeaway tonight is even though it's paperwork, it still needs to be done.
Yeah.
And there's no reason why we can't be moving on some of that paperwork to try and cut this list down.
And I've been having weekly meetings with Dave Walsh, and I haven't received anything in the past month.
And where we stand on the formation of the district, which seems to be the most time-consuming of the conditions.
That is a big, big, big item.
So-
And it's all legal, but it is on that list.
Les, can you help me with the language here, because there are town, excuse me, town board resolutions with respect to this, which don't specifically, unless I missed somewhere, cite that the town needs to receive notification directly from the state before the town releases the further square footage, or TCO.
Yeah, the word, this, the original wording that's in the town board resolution probably is not as precise as I would like it, but I think if you read it, particularly Number Two, it's up to the town's commissioner of public works and town engineer to agree in writing, that the best of their knowledge and understanding, the improvements have been completed.
Understood.
And that's probably sufficient to say until they are satisfied from the DOT, this isn't gonna happen.
So it doesn't need to cite that they, that they-
Yeah, I think it's okay the way it is.
And Sabrina's mentioned that this is the normal process, so it's-
Agreed.
Okay, sorry. As long as the applicant understands.
I mean, yeah, we'll need to get that to sign off on it.
Understood.
Regardless. So the important thing for this board is really Number Four, that's the only thing that's different from the town board, and that has to do with the trails. And what the applicant's asking for is a waiver on implementation of trails until the East Village is built out and approved and done.
Well, it's a delay, not a waiver.
Well, it makes sense, because the trails are designed to go through that area, so if we're gonna be raising the berm and changing the berm when the trails go through it, it seems to make sense that we'll do it later.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly reasonable.
Yep.
But I think that somehow we need to have something from the applicant that says we are aware of all these dates, and that we understand that the performance up to this point has only yielded about 23% of the items that need to be closed out to be closed out.
Well, again, my view of the matrix, which maybe, I'm not clear on that, I take your word for the numbers, the vast majority of the ones that I looked at that are unfulfilled are paperwork, much of which that you could not do now if you wanted to, such as ASBIL drawings and things of that nature. But I'll go back and check, I've been looking at that carefully.
Fair enough.
Yep, good. Okay. Les, is there anything else you want to tell us about on this?
Well, what I've tried to do to give you the full picture is give you what the town board did in their resolution, and they also made a fund negative declaration to address any of the off-site road improvement issues, as they have in the past, so they have taken that out of the planning board's hands and addressed that. So the resolution contains the exact language the town board used when adopting their resolution, and you have the unique provision of our resolution with respect to the timing of this one condition. And otherwise, I think the resolution has all the details in it. The council certainly concurs with the board that that list of issues, or matrix, which has been out there for a long time, needs to be, you know, cut down, and if there are things that are, I, my sense is there are things that can be done now to minimize that list, and it should be given priority, because I don't think the board wants to see a request where the road improvements are done, but the other stuff is not.
Right.
And we're looking for further TCO extensions.
Right, okay.
Understood. I will certainly inform them, and they will be back in front of you in a couple of weeks on the related matter of the East Village, and I'm sure you'll remind them again when you see them.
Okay, good. Any other comments, questions? If not, are there any comments, questions from the public on this application?
Can you please state your name for the record?
I don't have any records.
Be careful, you might have one, so.
It's all right. It's between me and the, out of Newcastle, and the other policing authorities. Anyway-
So John Ehrlich.
All kidding aside, there's not much to kid about when we're talking about that T intersection. My name is John Ehrlich, I live at One Apple Tree Close, I abut Roaring Brook Road, and my property is located, our property, my recognized property, is located several hundred yards from the T intersection in question and the improvements to be made. To some extent, I'm also representing some of my other neighbors in terms of some of their concerns regarding this process. This project to date has been, I was going to use the word a disaster, but there are different forms of disaster. The wall didn't fall down, we didn't lose 68 people, as other communities have suffered here, but this has gone on for a long, long time. The effect on traffic is profound. The addition of left-hand turn from 117 and right-hand turn traffic due to the new retail spaces has changed. Mitigation effects of certain things, such as the traffic light, have profoundly helped, because it has helped the eastbound traffic profoundly, but it has not helped the westbound traffic. It was just coming here today, just to give you an example, three cars in length in, good six, seven minutes to make that left-hand turn. It's imperative, imperative, that this T intersection be properly handled and stretched. Con Ed has not helped. Con Ed has been a continuing detriment to the roads on there, there's nothing but problems that are going to be coming from the wires that are along Roaring Brook Road and the intersecting wires, and I'm glad to hear that some people at Con Ed are still working, but they have been delaying much, and for that I do not find the development to be at fault. I'm glad it's taken on additional incentive for us to do, to do well and to perform quickly. What we would like to do is to, is to, one, make sure that the issues that Bob Lewis has previously stated and other neighbors that are directly abutting in this situation take care of it. There are supposed to be access lanes on the road, and we want to make sure that those actually happen and are working. We need temporary signage to inform people so that people just aren't confused as normally, because we do not have the police or any governing authority there to direct traffic or to override the traffic signals. We have to make sure that the traffic signals are in coordination with this particular situation. All of that needs to be done before that, that road can be, in our opinion, ruled as acceptable. It's enormously important. You have two exits that directly abut this to Chappaqua Crossing, two of the major entrances, the old one, the, and the ones that, the new ones that are constructed. So I thank this board for directing their attention to do these things, and we certainly do appreciate it. I do want to comment something that nobody mentioned. Item D was to talk about the cooperation in opening onsite trails for public use as a condition of the final certificate of occupancy. For the East Village, the East Village may seem a ways away right now, but the reality is the things that Chappaqua Crossing has done that are very well. We cannot take our dogs to Greeley, but we can take our dogs to, to the site development. We've had, met no opposition, nobody's challenged. We obviously bring our black bags and other colored bags and pick up after our friends, but we do want to make sure that these site developments and the trailways are dealt with. And there's also another issue that was not raised today, and it's a very pressing issue, and it could result in loss of life. That's the increase in pedestrian traffic from people that are working at Whole Foods and the other retailers, and they are walking from their place of employment on a regular basis at hours, all hours of the day and night, on a road that's not equivalent and that cannot handle it. This is a traffic mitigation that regards 117. How, what are we going to be doing? How are we going to be getting these employees back and forth? I am scared to death driving on 117 at night, of hitting one of these folks at 10:00 at night when they get off work at Whole Foods. And they have no other way. If you talk to them, they have no other way to get downtown. The bus stops don't work, and there's really no, no real transportation for them to get there. So what we propose is that you establish, as part of the planning board process, another condition that requires the retailers to provide transportation for their employees that does not involve walking. And that's not a typical planning board situation, but do we have to have somebody killed before, I mean, not to mention the inconvenience, and we all know that the buses do not run at that hour at night, so how are we gonna get those Whole Foods employees and other employees back and forth? It's not an issue that's been raised, shouldn't certainly develop to change, you know, to delay their development and their ability to rent retail space, but it is a life, a life thing. So these issues are very, very important, and I just wanted to add and make sure that all utilities are in compliance, and that is not the least of which is Con Edison. We cannot go to the NISIC or any of the other providers, we can't make that change. They've got to do their job, they are not. And so I thank, I thank the gentleman to my, to my right who has pled the case, I've heard him speak on several occasions, they're trying to help and they're trying to run a business, but let's run a business without having people killed on the roadways, let's run a business that, that deals with the traffic and the traffic signals, and respects the right of homeowners like Bob Lewis, who directly abut this particular situation, and to make sure that we are in good shape with the bus stops and all of the other entrances, so that as people come from near and far, hopefully, to patronize these retailers and other businesses and other homes that will be created there, that they will be well, well dealt with, well handled, and make it a proud, proud, proud location for the town of Newcastle. Thank you very much for your time and your effort.
Thank you. Sabrina, as I recall, we did talk about pedestrians, and I think that was the town board and supervisor who were talking with the retailers in terms of the shuttle, and I don't know if that's up and running, but again, it's a town board issue.
The shuttle is running, and I know that the town board was speaking with the site owner to try and extend hours and redevelop the schedule so that it was more accommodating.
Right.
I don't know the conclusions of that or where it stands right now.
And I think they were-
Nothing is, they are, they are walking at 10:00 at night.
We'll try to contain as much information as I can.
Yep. Because I know that it was not just the developer, I know that conversations were going to be held with the retailers themselves, with their employees.
Correct.
Because it was an issue, it was raised actually several times during this TCO process, and it was a major concern, so it has been observed, and I think that will be the solution, but I'm not sure where that is at this point in terms of the shuttle. And then the other issue is, we had asked, and the applicant had asked, for the county to change the bus stop to go internally, but they've come back and said, no, we're not going to do that, it will change our schedule, it will increase costs, and it'll be liability, whatever that means, whatever they envision on that. But basically, the county has said, no, we are not going to change the bus stop, it's going to stay on 117. We had asked for them to do it internally, we thought that would be safer and better, but they've said no. And I don't know what the hours are for the buses.
They do not run that late.
So they stop, what, around seven or eight, something like this?
Yep, during peak, peak.
Then they're gonna get killed.
So it's a problem. We, we've heard this before, it's-
The town has recognized this being an issue, and I believe, and I will review it, that the town board has been working with the project site in different towns and whatnot to try and solve it.
Can the developer get involved with those discussions?
I believe that the primary conversations have been had with the developer.
They need to be, because he's the one who provides the shuttle service, is that right? Are we talking about the same shuttle?
Well-
Is that right?
The approvals, the parking management plan sets forth the shuttle hours to be consistent
with the peak train hours. There was a schedule that was approved by this board during the original approval process. There has been efforts to try and expand that service to address the concerns raised by Mr. Ehrlich.
Yep.
Okay, so it is in process, I don't know how quickly it's moving or where it stands, I will research it.
Yep, thank you.
So I'd just like to make the observation, I think this is a critical concern, and I, maybe this is the proper way for it to have fallen out, I'm not sure that it is. It seems to be that the obligation on the property owner, I don't know what, it could be that this particular property owner, who is obligated to provide this service now, may one day just exit the whole deal, and may, you know, sell out and go. I don't know whether the responsibility for running that then devolves to the next property owner, the next property manager, I don't know how that works, and I imagine, I imagine that that would, I would think that that'd be something that the town board is looking into, to be sure that it's there in perpetuity, in absence of any real infrastructure to get these people back and forth safely, fix the infrastructure. The other thing about it which concerns me is that we still, we're still shy of another 90 housing units, and there are domestics who are going to be-
Exactly, exactly.
And it's going to add to that traffic of people needing to get to the train back and forth, and I think that that really needs to be recognized as something that, that feeds into the solution to this problem, so that we're sure that we're anticipating the level of impact that it might be.
We have a new, if I may continue my comments, we have a new and continually growing population of strangers to our town that will utilize these facilities that you were building. I am so sorry that Amazon is not handling it properly with, in terms of Whole Foods, getting their employees back and forth. If I were running a store, I'd never do it that way, I'd probably drive them myself, but that's, that's me, and I'm, I'm just, just a person. But as a resident, very close to this development, I live in mortal fear that I'm going to accidentally not see somebody, and I'm gonna hit them, because we're talking about the middle of the night and frequently unlighted roads, and if there's a fog situation, or any weather situation, or any inclement weather situation, or what are these folks gonna do to get home in the rain? What are these folks gonna do, heaven forbid, once we get to snow, and we know we do get our share of snow in this area? We, we must adjust, and, and, and do it so we can. Anything that we, as the population, can do to encourage Con Ed to fulfill their responsibilities and the other utilities, to, for them to be code compliant, just like we're asking this gentleman, and you ask all of your, your folks to be code compliant, let's, let's do that. I could raise a lot of other issues, but it's not related to this. I mean, for example, the integration of the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center, we're gonna get a lot of strangers in our area. And so this, this is growing, and we have a city there, a little, a little city, and let's, I mean, it doesn't qualify as a city, I think you need 18,000 people, but I think it's, it's not a city, but it certainly is, at the very least, a village. And so I-
It's definitely a hamlet.
A ham-
So let me, let me- So let me, let me, uh, let me, let me ask a question then. If, uh, the solution to this problem, which is pending, we hope that it's going to come to completion, but it's not resolved yet, uh, relies on the current property manager, property owner of the whole development, right? To provide a service that's not yet being provided, is it inappropriate for us to make our resolution contingent upon the solution to this problem?
Well, you already have, you have going back several resolutions that the conditions have to be satisfied before you sign off on site plan approval. Now, some of the issues that relate to the off-site road improvements and discussions that the town board is already having with respect to how to handle people walking on the street that came up with the MPT plan, which they were, took jurisdiction over. I think this is something that probably should be raised in the upcoming joint meeting between the two boards for a status report. Um, I will take a look at the conditions of our back resolutions and see how this fits into it, if it does. And obviously if it does in any manner, shape or form, the board doesn't have to give its signature on the final site plan until it's satisfied.
I, I think this is a life safety question that maybe needs to be, get head on.
Yeah, I think let's, uh, define a good starting point. Uh, I would add to that, that, that any time we have, uh, a meeting on anything to do with Chappaqua Crossing with the applicant, that they come in and give us a, an update as to where this stands so we can understand whether there's, everybody's been on vacation and no one got to it. Unacceptable, but, uh, you know, is it just static or is it actually moving? And if there's something that's really hanging it up, well then maybe we can then take that information and send it on to the town board and find some other part of the town that can make this work.
I think that's what Sabrina was going to look into, to find out what the status of those discussions are.
Yep. You mentioned the, the utilities and, and I, I think we can give a high level of assurance that all the utilities will have to meet all of their rules and regulations and have to comply with, uh, you know, the state and local guidelines, right?
You can't, you can't, if you take a look, take, take a look at the status, just look at the polls when you, when you make your next site visit. Just look at the polls, look up, see the wires, the wiring that's, that's running, all the things that could, that could happen. You were a situation because a tree fell on the lines. Uh, you know, we had asked originally that the lines be buried. ConEd was not going to do that.
Right.
Uh, we can't really threaten to go to NISIC, even though I wouldn't mind it. That might not be a, a future consideration, but it's not going to be resolved by the time this, this situation is ended. But let's handle what we can. We can handle the left turn signals. We can make sure that those adjustments, uh, allow for, uh, northbound traffic on 117 to be properly handled as well as the southbound traffic. Uh, and we do see a pronounced increase in the southbound traffic on 117 is a natural outcome of, of the retailers and soon to be, hopefully for you, the, uh, the other spaces that will, that will be utilized. But we are creating bigger than a hamlet, uh, really a village there. Uh, and, uh, let's, let's work together and to the extent that the community and our neighbors can, can help with this situation, uh, do let us know and keep us in the loop on this. We will try to, to do it. I know Bob Lewis has lost a lot of his property as a result of this, I think others as well. And I want to say that this is also affecting, one more point in conclusion, um, this is affecting the sales and rentals of houses. We've already lost one Roaring Brook Road member, um, who has left, sold their house for less than they expected. We have another one, uh, the Sabatones, uh, with an Apple Tree Close address, but also on Roaring Brook Road. They have left, they have very little interest in their house. So this is affecting, um, area real estate, just, it's a planning consideration. And let us know as neighbors how we can help the planning process here. Thank you very much for your time and effort.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to follow up on the trails for a second. Uh, Mark, could you help me out here for a second? As I understand the request, it's that the trails not be constructed until the full, uh, the full build out of the residential neighborhood.
That's correct.
So, uh, first of all, unless I'm mistaken, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but the full, the, the first phase build out begins, unless I'm mistaken, with the grading of the property. And then you essentially have the property graded and the development model, I understood that Toll Brothers was going to pursue, is one which is typical to them, which is they do it in sections. They, they sell, build, sell, build, sell, build. And as a consequence, there is no guarantee when or if ever the full build out will happen. So if we're putting a contingency on this trail being, uh, not built until the full build out happens, I don't know when that would be. Uh, secondly, unless I'm mistaken, most of the grading that we're worried about, which is a matter of concern for safety, would probably be done early in the project anyway. And, and just one more point, and that any construction zone that Toll Brothers is involved in, in their phasing would be properly fenced anyway. So I'd like you to talk about that. Is there not a way to open up these trails sooner?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I will tell you, I would agree that the vast majority of the, of the grading work and the infrastructure is going to be in place, but I don't know how much of it would be completed only for a first phase. It's very possible that if it's being done in sections, there are sections that will be impacting the walking trails, uh, as part of later phases as well. It's not unusual to say that certain infrastructure has to be done after the completion of a certain number of the units. I'm just not the person who would be able to answer that question tonight as to whether it would be something short of full construction. I don't feel expert enough to answer.
I think most of the trails are outside of where the construction is going to be once the, the site is graded.
The grading, your overall grading.
So, so we're not that far along yet where we have the grading plans or whatever? If it's possible to work into the condition that while they will, that they can be transferred to work as it proceeds on the East Village at a certain point to be later defined as we review the phasing plan for that project?
I think.
Because I think the board's comment, Tom's comments, if the rest of the board agrees, are very valid in relation to the way that the developer may choose to develop the town homes. There's a certain amount of site work that will need to be done regardless of many, however many homes are built. And we should make sure that we are getting the trails when they are most apt to be.
Well, do we have to take action on the trails at this point? We do because they, the retail's open.
Well, yeah, they haven't met this condition and won't be able to.
Right.
Well, for years.
Well, but to, to Tom's point, this language for the final certificate of occupancy is, is really far down the road.
It could be 10 years.
Yeah.
I'm right on. I mean, it's, take a look at what was, how it was built in Pleasantville. It still isn't finished.
Could I, uh, could I ask to be in a position of compliance? That we would amend our request, the request that it be done a building permit for the East Village and then we would come back possibly to amend that with a phasing plan to show you when it might be.
Or the initial certificate of occupancy for the East Village.
On what? The first sector of houses or all of the houses?
Well, the initial certificate of occupancy would be the first unit.
Yeah.
But I don't know, we, we will have to come back to you with a, and I don't think, I'm not even sure we could do that yet until we have a site plan that we know that we have for this.
Cause you're not going to get a, a building permit unless you've done your grading.
Correct. We need a, a construction phasing plan.
Exactly, we need that anyway, exactly.
We need all that information, which will help us further identify where it's best to be placed temporally.
And at which, and at which point, if it's determined that it is not safe for a later point, we'd come back and ask you to amend it. We just don't want to be out of compliance.
Right. To Sabrina's point, I think the first building permit is probably a fair, fair.
To keep in mind, it's going to be done on phases too as well.
Yes. But the first building permit for the first phase, I think is, makes sense.
For each phase.
And again, to Mark's point, if it's unsafe and we have problems, we come back and no one wants to have a problem, so.
The amount, we'll put the first one for each phase.
The, the amount of grading that they need to do in order to, to, to prepare that site, I mean, that's a lot of dirt they're going to be moving. And I don't, maybe I'm wrong, well, I'm sorry, let me finish. That it's, to me, it's unlikely that they would grade only for the first phase and then come back and move a lot more earth while they have people on site.
They're going to grade as much as they can within the New York State D E C five acre limit.
They're going to do the big rough grading right away.
That's going to dictate their phasing.
Right. And then, and that will establish where the trails.
How many that may be, I don't know. I haven't seen it.
But I would also mention, and there may also be construction trails that need to be made that might impact the walking trails, where the, where the equipment's coming from, et cetera. So the point is, I just don't think we have the information. We would like to delay it to a point where we know we're in compliance and if we then would come back and give you the.
I think that's sensible. I, you know, if you don't have the information, then the odds in my mind are they don't, the rest of the team doesn't really have.
Not yet. I think the first building permit makes sense.
Yeah, the first building permit is, is perfect.
And, and, and I don't, and I don't know how you feel about creating the condition where it is reviewed contingent with the building permit and the phasing plan to where it is, public, public safety is kind of put out there and, and leaving it in the hands of the building inspector who, and, and Bob, who review the building permit applications to make sure that it's safe and letting them decide the optimal time to make sure the public is safe on trails that are open to the public.
Makes perfect sense.
And that way he doesn't have to come back for this one condition or whatever.
We would be fine with that.
Okay.
Makes sense.
So, um, we're going to base it on the first building permit? And then I was also thinking, maybe we'd add language unless otherwise specified in a subsequent planning board site plan resolution for the East Village, which would then obviate the need to come back and amend this if later on, when we did the site plan for the East Village, we had a more firm time period.
It works.
We'll, we'll certainly know it by then.
Yeah, so it's, it's just, you know, opens up that door, not having to come back. If we're going to change the date, we would just do it in the subsequent site plan resolution and we wouldn't have to come back and amend this thing.
Okay. I like that.
We can add that, that language to, um, page six.
Page six, uh, item four, right? So, um, as amended, oh, well, any other comments from the public? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is secure compliance. So you have an EAF and a draft neg deck that's been prepared.
Is there a motion to adopt the?
Well.
Questions on it?
Yeah, I have some minor questions. I can find it. A little confused on two, two items, they're not major, should be easy to fix, if we decide that it should be fixed. Um, is, this is for the whole, this is, the short form is for the whole project in a way because they referenced the 113, 114 acres, right? Is that right?
This short form is just for the portion of, it's the, this application.
The proposed action is the extension of the TCO.
And those four elements.
Right.
Yeah. Extension to the TCO, opening up for additional retail, office and the amendments of the conditions. Also, that's what this EAF is based on.
Okay, so the stormwater pond that we have right next to the commercial area and, and right next to the Tupla Building, that's not included in this?
No. No changes, no changes, not an action.
It is not. The action relates to the four requests.
Sabrina, did you get a chance to change the, what is the involved agency?
On the bottom.
Part three, yeah.
Yeah.
So the fact that it's, it checks off that residential is adjoining, then also adjoining is, is a pond, that doesn't matter because, um, is the pond constructed? Is that the way, that's not included? I don't understand the English, I guess.
Which, which number are you?
Well, I'm looking at, at number 18 on page three of three.
Of the applicant's EAF.
Yeah. That's right, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. And, you know, the, um, we can start with page one of three. The total acreage of the proposed action is 113.7 acres. That isn't, what's the whole site?
Yeah.
Well, that's right, whole site.
That's right.
So if it's the whole site, why isn't the pond included? And, and, you know, you say yes and you check it off and say, uh, the stormwater pond is being built.
The, the pond was already, the request, the action before you is about the TCOs. It's not about the stormwater. That, the stormwater has been addressed in your previous negative declar, deter.
Finding statements on.
Determinations.
All right, but they, they talk about the proposed total acreage of the, of the site. I see, okay, I see the way out of it. All right, never mind.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on it? If not, is there a motion to adopt, um, we do it sequentially, less, each one?
Adopt the negative declaration.
Okay. Is there a motion then to adopt the negative declaration that's been prepared for us?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We don't have to do anything with EAF.
No, no, the next thing would be, the resolution is amended.
Okay. So as amended, is there, uh, would less to come up with the appropriate language that we've discussed here? Is there a, a motion to adopt the amended, uh, resolution?
Still moved.
Second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're all set. Very good. Okay, thank you. Okay, we move now to our second item. This is a public hearing for Katz. This is an application for a site development plan for an accessory apartment approval. Two seventy-five Croton, damn room.
I'm a talent architect and, um, I'm just going to briefly go through the numbers and then Cheryl Katz will follow up. I'd like to say as an, an ex-sound engineer for the Rolling Stones, this room definitely needs a different setup. I used to be a sound engineer before I became an architect with the Rolling Stones, nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-seven.
Well, that's why your hearing's not so good. Well, that's not concerts.
I left because of the sound level in nineteen seventy-four to become an architect. So, um, on the latter, that was the latter note. The, based on the comments that you have made.
We'll strike you for the minutes.
We have one, two, three and four, there's no, and five, there's no further comments from you, so I presume that all the drawings that I have provided were sufficient.
Well, we'll get to that. Why don't we, in case there's someone here from the public, do you have a thumb drive just to show what we're doing here? We wanted to show the, um, the updates and your drawings, you know, showing the wall being removed, the French doors being removed and some of the, the location, the septic, the well, all of those, those sorts of things.
Main entrance.
Right, main entrance, right.
Are they on the system?
I don't have them in the system. Do you want to put it in?
Thank you. And this, the thumb drive has got the latest drawings, right? The updated sketches. Thank you. Great, terrific.
Just go up and down? Just go up and down?
I'm not presenting.
I'm not sure what she has there.
All right.
We haven't coordinated this matter.
Do you have, do you have the, your floor plans, your most recent floor plans that you can pull up so that the public can understand what it is you're doing?
The before and after?
What, the proposed?
What you're proposing.
Okay.
Can you pull them up on the screen?
Okay, great, thank you. Katz is up on top, the very top one?
Today, seven forty-seven P M.
That was just open. One at the very top.
That one. Yeah.
Double click it.
There we are.
That's the floor plan.
That's the floor plan.
Can we see the site plan?
I wanted to do the.
Sorry.
Scroll down, is there more than one?
Can I get into the?
Oh, scroll it down. Yeah, it's one of one.
No, I wanna go back to the content.
Go back to the folder on the bottom. Click the orange-yellow folder.
Yes, oh, I see, there.
Are you trying to, wasn't that where you had your files?
I'm trying to open my folder. You said it?
Open folder to view files.
I can't see from here.
Right there.
This one? Okay, and then we were in July second.
There you go.
Okay, that's exactly, and I put them in order, so, okay, so the first one was the agenda, so now how do I back up when I wanna go back? Can I go back to the folder at the bottom? I have to go to the folder at the bottom? Every time, okay. Okay, so... Basically, we just reviewed this last time, that the property is located at two seventy-five Croton Dam.
Mrs. Katz, can I, can I, can I interrupt you a moment? Is there any way you can pull up plans that the, the public can see? That is my memo, which I think the board has already read, has been online for the public to view. You really need to show the site plan for your property, as well as the proposed condition that you're looking to get approval on.
That's my thing, my statement.
Maybe the survey?
There's a floor plan. There's a floor plan.
Don't want the floor plan.
Floor plan.
We don't want it. With the site plan.
So it's either the survey or keep going down.
Keep going down.
Let me help out here. May I?
Yes, please. Keep the Katz plan?
Well, let's see. You want to run the survey?
No.
Is this?
Site plan.
That's the one.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Number eight?
Or that one?
No?
No.
That's a plan, site plan is the parking.
Is it the parking P D F?
No, no.
It, this is, it isn't on here. There's a proposed floor plan.
Proposed floor plan.
Right.
But it's not.
Could you scroll down on that one or make it smaller?
Yeah, but there's no front. There's no driveway.
There was in the package, there was the drawing with all the dimensions on it, stuff like that.
Yeah, right, here's the drawing. This is what I produced, I don't know why it's not, it's not here.
It's not, it's not on there.
Why not? Okay.
Okay. We have it.
Anyway, this is the site plan with all the information that's all reviewed, right?
I may with, I'm going over some of the items, yes.
Yes, thank you. And so that's, we have the parking, we have the lot areas, and we have the septic, and,
This is great. Thank you, Greg.
Did you put it in?
I didn't look at those pick ones.
You did.
Okay.
You did, I count you.
The survey?
Yes.
Did we, um, get confirmation about the zoning variance?
Yes.
It was to the corner, it was touching the line, was that okay? Was that the variance?
It is, was issued, it was issued appropriately, it is.
It goes up to the line, that was fine.
Correct.
Okay.
It's on a different test, it's not on mine. I don't know what you said to them.
Okay.
Okay, anyway, um... The, the first item on this memo was, um...
Mrs. Katz, can you please speak into the microphone?
Yes.
The first, the first thing on this item was the floor plan to show that floor, the first floor and the second floor, the existing conditions, and number of bedrooms, and number of kitchens, which I thought that my item that I had just shown, um, it's not the actual drawings, but it would be clear for the public to see, um, what exists, and then the proposed would show what the changes are, they're very, very minor changes, but...
If I may, I, I, let, let me, let me take a stab at this to try and move this public hearing forward. So, the property is located at two seventy-five Croton Dam Road, the property is zero point seven one acres in size, and is located in our two acre single-family zoning district. The property currently contains a thirty-two hundred square foot three-bedroom home with a well and a septic system. There are currently four parking spaces on the site where two are required per the town code. This application is before the planning board for approval of converting the three-bedroom home to a two-bedroom home and establishing a four hundred and fifty square foot one-bedroom accessory apartment in the basement of the existing single-family home. Their existing single-family property does not meet current zoning requirements for lot area. It is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The lot pre-dates zoning, and therefore the lot size is considered pre-existing non-conforming. Town records also indicate that in October two thousand fifteen, the Newcastle Zoning Board of Appeals granted two front yard and two site yard variances for a first and second floor addition and alterations to repair and expand an existing deck. So that's, that is the description of the project that is before you tonight. The applicant has provided existing, a, a site plan which shows the parking, the sightlines in the driveway, there are two points of egress and, and access onto the roadway from the driveway, the, um...
Does it show the sightlines?
Um, Mr. Chioli, the town engineer, reviewed the sightlines and okayed the sightlines based on the information that was submitted.
But it's not on, it's not on.
Or not okay, but, sorry, Bob, go ahead.
I did not okay the sightlines. I felt to try to move this project a long.
Right.
I can always go out there and take a look at it prior to their C O.
Right.
And make a determination if anything needs to be done. I drove by there, I went on Google, it looked so far so good, but I had put and placed that in the resolution just to cover it as a condition.
Well.
I think it's the cleanest way to help.
Go ahead, finish.
So I think that was the best way to handle it, I'll let you guys think otherwise.
Well, uh, Sheila and I have wandered by the site, and, um, you'll be, there's no, we have no vertical cross-sections, so you'll see, uh, when you go from the edge of this road, here's the road, and this is the driveway. It's fifteen, twenty percent right from the get-go. So that when you get your wheels up on the two feet off the road, that's it, the rest of you is hanging in a car down. I tried to make a right-hand turn into the more westerly branch of this, the architect is properly labeled, in a, in a simplistic way, that you can only go out of that, that western part of it, and only turn right with safety. There's a fence.
Fence, yeah, that's, I thought it was an obstruction, fence, didn't you?
Yeah, the fence is such that it really obstructs the view of anybody even trying to make a right-hand turn out of that. You know, so there's a whole bunch of things that really have to be done relative to that. They are all small and they're doable, which then comports with, with what you're doing, but we gotta get them on the, on.
You could have them do it before the P P?
Well, I think we have to agree to do it. Right now, so they don't get surprised, but it needs signage, uh, like, right turn only, do not enter here.
Put that on private driveway, don't it?
The circular private driveway? There is plenty of footage to see the road.
I've seen that.
There's no trees, there's no...
Well, I just, there's a fence, there is a fence that obstructed my view when I came.
It's pre-existing.
But that, but in my neighborhood, there was three houses with two curb cuts, and this board and the building department made those three homes eliminate each second curb cut. Those are all pre-existing, so why is this different?
Well, I didn't say it's any different, I couldn't make a determination on when it was put in, that's really.
So I'm wondering, how come we're permitting a second, and we're now reconfiguring the driveway for one curb cut? One safe, properly engineered, designed curb cut? Why are we letting two curb cuts exist? Where we don't let anybody else in town do it who has much bigger piece of property and much wider frontage on a road?
Well, I have a different view, but I'll let Sheila talk.
Well, I mean, having entered into the driveway, which you kind of have his permission to do, um, I, I, I would say that if you were to try and make a left-hand turn out of the westerly spoke of that driveway, you would not be able to do it.
That's making the presumption you may do too.
I agree with that.
Right.
That's why there are two weeks.
But, but to make a single entrance would require steepen, I think, would require steepening the grade of the, of the driveway, right?
That's where they're ranked.
Now, you've got two flares, and each one flares in a slightly different direction, so that, you know, if I were making a left-hand turn out of here, I would wanna use the easterly flare of the driveway, and if I were making a right-hand turn on this property, I would wanna use the westerly flare of that driveway. But if you were to create one flare, one curb cut, you would then...
Perpendicular curb cut.
Does this have relevance to the accessory apartment?
Yes, it does. This is your application.
So if there were no accessory apartment, then this would not be an issue?
Well, you wouldn't be here.
You wouldn't be here.
Exactly.
So maybe I'm reaching the point of withdrawing my application, because, um...
That's your prerogative.
It, it really doesn't make any sense to go through any of this. Secondly...
I think you're, you should think about that before you say those words. Want to take a break for a minute?
Yes, I, I think as an architect, having done the both turns, having just the one-way exit going to the west, it's an inconvenience, but it's a really safety inconvenience, and I think...
Put a one-way sign.
No, no, I, I think, having been almost killed not too far from, in Pleasantville, from the very sharp lift approaching car coming over speed, I have never been that close to the death in the last four weeks. I understand that, and so, if we just closed off that eastern one, it would be inconvenient, but safe.
For an accessory, no.
I don't think it would be safe to make a left-hand turn, not a western.
We have just one, please.
Yeah, that's right.
Can I, we can't keep minutes if everyone's talking at the same time.
Can I raise my hand and try something here?
Sure.
So, um, if it's, if, if it's feasible to go in on the eastern leg...
Mm-hmm.
Why is it not feasible to go out on the eastern leg? Why not come out that way?
Well, I mean, if you're going to make them revise it, I'd recommend they'd have to hire an engineer to come up with a couple of plans.
I'm sorry.
Really look at the traffic, and have them come up with a determination if it's that much of a problem.
I understand what you're saying, but...
It's not that much of a problem.
Are we saying that it's, that it's not safe now to come out of the eastern branch?
Any driveway.
I'd have to really go through, they're not gonna do a whole analysis if it's one way to. I think they should get their own engineer to do that, as opposed to the town going that way.
Right, let me just follow this, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, I think they should hire their own engineer, present it to the board, then we'll discuss it, I mean, if that's the concern, it seems it's a very big concern.
First of all, let's go to a different issue about...
Excuse us, excuse us, please. Just a minute, please, I, just let me finish, okay? I'm sorry, just let me finish. I just wanna chase this through, so at least I understand. You, you, one now leaves, when you're making a left-hand turn coming off the property, you come off, out of the eastern branch, right? Because you're not gonna go on the western and make a left turn, 'cause you just can't do it, it's unsafe. So, if you can make a left-hand turn out of the eastern branch, can you make a right-hand turn out of the eastern branch? And if that's the case, why do we, why do we need the, the western one anyway, which I think is the one which is, one of the ones, which is creating a sightline problem and a safety problem?
You'd have to pick the lesser of the two evils and see which one's safer in most instances.
They make that one harder.
As opposed to keeping both, because if you're gonna keep both, just try to put signage in there, it's very tough to enforce.
This gets back to Greg's point, which is a good one.
Very good.
Why rely on two curb cuts to begin with here? Now, I understand it's grandfathered, I understand it, I understand it's grandfathered in, but if we have a condition which is unsafe, even though it's grandfathered in, I think we have an obligation to fix it.
And again, I think they should hire the, if you require it, services of an engineer, be experienced in traffic, let them come up with a plan and a report, and then we review it.
It's irrelevant, because the county did not respond to the water, the septic issue, unless you've received a response.
No, but that would be something that we would condition it upon, we did not expect the county to respond.
He has no plans to, um, okay it, even though legal says two hundred per bedroom, that's six hundred plus twenty percent, which is seven fifty, and we have a thousand gallon tank, but the fact that he cannot find records, um, you know, we're, we're stuck. I'm not going to start with an engineer for that.
Could you speak to, with the county?
To the county of Fred?
Fred Beck?
Yeah.
And what exactly did he say?
He would have to find the records and, um, assess the septic fields, I assume that's because of the zoning of the two acres, but there's never been an issue about that.
Regarding the kitchen?
Right, so his comment was, make it a kitchenette and don't have a stove. If that's the case, I don't even need to bother making an accessory apartment.
Well, if you have a kitchenette, you can't have an accessory apartment, I don't believe.
Right, so, so the whole issue is mute. So I don't need to waste your time.
Well, that, that could certainly be the case, we could just, um, you know, defer the application until we hear back from you, if at all, if you wanna pursue.
Until he gives a formal response.
Right, because if you are going to be dorming on this application based on the county, we agree, there's no point wasting your time or money on it, and that's perfectly fine with us, but we need to keep it, we have these materials, we can keep it, we can wait to hear from you. But, in, in, in addition, that, there might also be some, some issues with regard to this, this driveway configuration. I'm not so sure about the western versus eastern, but I, I was, I saw the fence, and I thought that was an issue that we would, would wanna make sure we were, were safe with. This is not just a small-town road, this is a state road, one thirty-four, there is considerable traffic, so, it's, it's, you know, it's a safety for the people on the road, as well as your safety for your folks and accessory apartment people, so it's, it's, it's a public concern, public safety concern. So, and to the extent that we have jurisdiction over an action, then we would have to consider this also, as one of the things that we would wanna bring up to speed and bring in compliance, as Greg pointed out. And it's not something that we pick out just for accessory apartments, to Greg's point, this goes on all the time, this is something that we do as a matter of policy wherever we can, to the extent that you are already grandfathered, if you didn't have an application, you, you can leave your driveway as is, but once you come before the board and ask for relief or changes, then we have to look at these other issues as well.
We're backing out of any changes.
Okay, so, anyway, so, with the applicant's agreement, we'll just defer this application...
Defer until such time as you submit new information to be considered by the board.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, 'cause I happen to agree with you that if the septic isn't set up right, then the rest of this...
It's set up right, he just doesn't have records to prove it, and when we, when we gave you Earth Care's commentary, that it is a thou- a thousand gallon system, it's like, he, he doesn't, he doesn't...
Mr. Chairman, you will need to adjourn the public hearing.
Septic, right, he's not recognizing it, so there doesn't seem to be an understanding, mutual understanding of what it is that's required.
Well, the county can't sign off on anything until they know what's there.
Right.
But they were offered all the information that the septic company that does regular maintenance and has also ordered their maintenance is they remove a thousand gallons when they do repairs, and there's no question there's a thousand gallon tank there.
The fields also.
It's fields. Now, it's the question of the fields, of why are more fields necessary when there are fields for a thousand? It doesn't follow the, you know, what exists there.
I can't speak for the county, but on my experience in dealing with the county of Fred Beck and Anthony Cunningham, they do require you, as the applicant, to demonstrate to them what's there already. Because they can't sign off on a no objection to see if it's going to handle the 25% increase if they don't know what's there. That's why you need to do all that investigation on your own, hire your own PE, your own engineer. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort.
And it's not worth it.
But that's what the county requires.
Well, in any event, what we'll do is, I think the best thing is to adjourn the public hearing, because we did open it, and I guess we have a motion to adjourn the public...
There may be folks from the public that may want to speak.
Okay.
Unless you're adding the fourth bedroom based on the 200 gallon per bedroom, which you can carry also with the 25, but you're saying we can't and I'm not clear why?
Because the town does not have purview over wastewater control. That is a Westchester County Health Department issue.
I know, but that...
If you want to add a fourth bedroom, it's approved for three, you'd obviously need a new system based on county regs, so why would you want to add a fourth bedroom?
Because of the size of the house.
But you haven't...
Why would that change anything? The fact of the matter is...
No one knows what's there.
We do know what's there. We know it works for three years.
Septic systems are based on bedroom count, so if you go to four, there's a whole different metric.
No, no, we did the calculation, it's still...
Right, but you haven't submitted to the town documentation from the...
There is no documentation on a 1931 house.
Right, but you could go out today and hire a wastewater engineer to do what you need to do to investigate that system.
It's not cost-effective.
Are there any comments from the public on this, at this point? No? Okay. If not, is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Just one more slide to four bedroom.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
You have to adjourn to a date certain, and then from there, we can continue to adjourn the applicant request.
Is there any way to not adjourn it and to post...
Or just keep it open?
Leave it open.
Right, keeping it open by adjourn.
Leave it open for a meeting or two.
It could be adjourned. It's the best procedure to take is to adjourn the public hearing to a date in September, and then at that point, we'll either adjourn it further or the application may be withdrawn.
If you're going to withdraw the application, we'll need documentation.
Yes, I would rather withdraw totally and not be involved with the town anymore.
We'll need something in writing to do that.
Exactly.
And in the interim, I recommend we adjourn the public hearing.
Right, to what's the meeting?
September.
Exactly.
What meeting do we have in September?
September 17th.
Seventeenth.
Okay, 17th?
I don't know.
That's a motion?
Yes.
Second?
So, second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
He made the motion?
Dick.
And he seconded.
Greg. Oh, I seconded.
Yeah, I did it, and Dick seconded. You can flip it around.
What leadership.
Okay, we move down to our next application. This is the Burdoff-Becker-Burack-Durst application. This is an application for a subdivision amendment, for a lot line amendment, clearing and grading limit line amendment, steep slopes permit, wetlands permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals, 24 and 14 trails end. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Geraldine Tortorella and Paul Sisak from JMC Engineering. This is this evening. We're just going to try to pull up one of the plans, but we can jump to any of them that you might want. As you know, we are here this evening for a public hearing. We have several applications pending before the board to address some existing conditions that need to get legalized. We're seeking a wetland permit approval, stormwater pollution prevention plan permit approval for some new impervious surfaces that were constructed after the stormwater ordinance went into effect. There are some improvements that go over the clearing and grading limit line that were on the filed subdivision plat, and then we are seeking lot line changes with respect to two parcels in order to rectify some exceedances of building and development coverage on the site. Is anybody in the audience here on this application? Okay. I just won't belabor, I won't go through a whole presentation of all the facts, if that's okay.
I thought you were going to change your story.
No, no, I just wanted to, unless you want me to, or have me to, I don't think you really need to. I want to jump right to...
We don't encourage that, it's okay.
I want to jump right to where we left off at the last meeting. So at the last meeting, Mr. Curley had suggested that instead of pursuing the Durst lot line adjustment, that we take a look and see if there's something that we could do with respect to some mitigation for the existing pond on 24 trails end, that's the Burdoff main property.
Enhancement.
Right, that would enhance it and would actually make a contribution to the environmental conditions there. And then, of course, that wetland is connected to a much larger wetland system, a 30-acre wetland system that goes off-site. And in lieu of doing the lot line change, possibly pursuing a variance from the zoning board of appeals, instead of doing that adjustment for the property. So we did retain Jerry Barrett from JD Barrett and Associates. JMC has some familiarity with the site, but JD Barrett and Associates had done the original wetlands work when there had been an incursion onto the property from a neighbor, and we had to get that rectified. That was back in the late 1990s, I think it was, or 2009. And there had been an application to do some mitigation and kind of put up some barriers to keep neighbors from encroaching in the future. And that wetland permit actually involved a lot of restoration work of the pond, a lot of invasive removal, species removal, and also a lot of planting. And so we asked Mr. Barrett to go out and look at both the conditions of that wetland, the pond wetland on the main residence parcel, and also the wetland on the Durst property to see what the value was of that wetland system, to see if there was something that we could do to address the suggestion. A report has been submitted to you. Mr. Barrett is unavailable tonight, he's on a community service trip out of town, which he could not change, it had been pre-arranged, and we didn't want to prolong this any longer and put it over to September. So Mr. Sisak can address, I think, your technical questions that you might have. But just to summarize, with respect to Mr. Barrett's findings, he found that the Durst wetland, while a decent wetland in decent condition, it's really isolated and it really doesn't have any special features on it that make it a vernal pool, which someone had asked us to think about, or also to see if it had any other special connection to a more extensive wetland system. So, well, it's not bad, it's good. There was really not much that needs to be done to maintain it, other than there's a benefit, I think, to taking it off of the table for future development and taking that site out of the equation. But he didn't really think that there was much mitigation that he would recommend for that parcel. Then he took a look at the wetland and the pond on the main Burdoff property, and found that, you know, it's in very good condition. You know, it was 10 years ago when that work had been done, there was a lot of mitigation that was done with that pond. It's in good condition, but like you would expect to find, over time, invasive species from off-site start to migrate and encroach onto the property. And he noticed a couple of locations where there could be some helpful and beneficial invasive species removal of that pond area. I think it's on the western edge and the eastern edge, and then also in some other locations on the short shelf that's right off to the side of the pond area. He thought it would be helpful to get back into taking those invasive species out, said that there were some areas that he saw some bare area, and he thought it would make sense to put some wetland plantings in that vicinity to stabilize it. He also thought it would be a good idea to place one or two logs in the pond itself to provide an opportunity for turtles to bask in the sun, in the sunnier sections of the pond. So he indicated that he thought those things would be valuable, he could, and he's described them in some detail in his report. Of course, we don't have a plan to submit to you, but what we would undertake to do is convert that description into a plan that would be reviewed by your board and also Mr. Coleman. He was in touch with Mr. Coleman, the environmental consultant of the town. I talked to him about this. Mr. Coleman has issued a memo to your board, he did get a copy of the report, and I think he concurs with the suggestions that were made. We did go to the ECP previously to ask to have the mitigation plan that had been done by JMC reviewed, and they were fine with it. They had made recommendations, favorable recommendations to your board, but I think this is added benefit. On the issue of the lot line change, our client would still like to go forward with the lot line change with Durst and with Burack as well, even in addition to doing this additional mitigation on the pond area. And the reason is because it took him a very long time to get a contract for that lot line change. That contract is not good forever. There is a concern that if we were to go to the zoning board of appeals and the application not be disposed of quickly or in our favor, that we could find ourselves up against a situation where the contract could be canceled, and then we would really have a problem because we have an issue where the building department cannot issue us a certificate of occupancy or rectify, you know, the non-conformities with respect to building and to development coverage. I appreciated the offer and the suggestion of trying to avoid the need to have to do the lot line change, but I will tell you that the Burdoffs are very concerned about finding themselves in a situation where they don't have a solution to the situation that they're facing. And I think, as I explained to you, they are looking to sell the property, so this is something that they do have a relatively immediate need to get rectified.
Okay, thank you. All righty, Bob, your comments, thoughts?
I have one stormwater comment, I've been asking for the past two or three memos, and I know they mentioned a total gross area, but I still don't see exactly what areas that were built after the law came into effect. So I don't know why it's so difficult to obtain those areas, since I've asked this three times previous.
Okay. I think we had a drilling at the end of the stormwater map in the board.
I saw that. And it does not break it down at all in any way, so...
A little more breakdown of the impervious.
I'd like to see exactly the areas that were built after 2007, but I cannot ascertain that looking at the maps.
That was just a total, yeah, increase.
It'd be nice to see that.
We can provide that, Jim. We were able to calculate it, so we had a basis to do that.
Sure. Just show it on the map that says...
I guess that's why we didn't address it, because we thought that we just have to point you in the right direction.
I'd like to see where it comes from.
Sure.
That's in the map. RS1, evidently with this clearing and grading of the line that they showed, based upon the review of the clearing and grading of the lines going across lots five and six, there's several encroachments into the existing CG and LL. I mean, I would recommend that they be modified to take into account the portions of the chain link fence, post-of-wire fence, and existing driveways that encroach into it. They're focusing on one lot, but I think they should do this one as well. So therefore, the planning board should determine if these encroachments are acceptable or amend the previously approved clearing and grading limit line over those two lots. And they're pretty substantial. I don't know why they were never picked up or changed or looked at or discussed, but in my review of both, all lots, I did notice that.
And again, this would bring them within compliance.
Yeah, I mean, I see no reason to ministerially review it and include it in with the maps. For some reason, they were focusing on the other lots, for some reason.
Yeah, so if I can just explain, so the parcels, this is the Burack property, and the Burack property consists of lots five and six from the original subdivision. So it's the Burack bear encroachments into the clearing and grading limit line on the Burack property. It was our understanding from our staff meetings that we really didn't have to get into conditions on the Burack property because all we were seeking was a lot line adjustment. But to your point, if we're filing a map that adjusts the clearing and grading limit lines, I don't see any reason why we can't do that with respect to this as well, because it can, oh, I think, be contained on the same lot, on the same map.
They're co-applicants because they're involved with the lot line change.
Correct.
I don't see it as a big issue, except to you guys.
Yes.
If they're filing a new map, they might as well do it.
They might as well include.
It's a graphic. They're happy to do it, right?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we can't. I mean, there's a little bit more work. I mean, if we had to have a separate hearing for, you know, for another reason or something, I would ask you not to, but if we could just include it in the same map, it would make sense. We're happy to do that.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. RS2, evidently approximately 60 feet of an existing chain link fence, which is located over, of course, lot A, should be relocated, in my opinion. There is not to encroach onto the newly created lots?
That's right in this section right here. The pink is going from Burack to Burdoff, and the blue is going from Burdoff to Burack.
Yeah, because once you put the lot in, they'll be encroaching into the other lot.
The fence will be?
They might as well put it on the right property line now, and now's the time to do it.
We can relocate it. I assume we would want to do it once we file the, if the board approves, the lot line adjustments once we file the maps. Wouldn't that make sense, timing wise?
Yes, we had something similar like this, I don't know, that somebody just showing us built to that effect as well.
Okay.
Demonstrate that if that's been relocated. RS3, the following drawings and maps should be revised in order to correspond with those comments as mentioned above, and all the other drawings that you show that reference or correspond to these should be shown as well. So they're all on the same page.
Yep, you're looking for consistency. Understood.
Spreina, did you have some comments?
All my comments have been addressed.
Okay. And we did get the memo from Steve, and he seemed to endorse Jerry's, Jerry Barrett's proposals.
Jerry Tortorella's, too.
Okay.
Jerry squared, I like that.
Right, when we're on the phone, it makes it a little difficult.
Right, okay. Do we have any other questions, comments from board members?
Well, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the effort and the investigations you guys went through, and seeing if there's more that could be done with this wetland and trade for, and I perfectly understand your client would rather just sort of double down on the property because that's the safest way to go with respect to moving this thing along, buying the property, I think that's great. I mean, I think that's fine. I mean, we really can't object to it at this point, I don't think. And engaging Mr. Barrett and then with the response from Steve, I think that the proposals are good. I think they're sound. I think that they're really going towards where I thought we wanted to go with this wetland anyway. And so I see you as, I think, satisfying where I think that we ought to be on the wetland, more so than maybe you might have done without that investigation. And so I really appreciate the effort, and I think it's going to be better.
Great, thank you.
I have a question. I'm a little confused. The being out beyond the obstruction and grading limit line, is that occurring on where? Which properties?
So it's occurring on the Burdoff property?
Yeah.
And then Mr. Cialli has pointed out that it's also occurring on the Burack property.
Okay, so for Burdoff's property, where is it out of west? Over or what?
Yeah, not too much, but let us, if we can zoom in, so it might just be a little easier to see. It's really that pink line.
Yeah, so the reddish dash line is the existing, and then the purple is the proposed. So zoom in a little bit more.
Yeah, I can't see the purple yet.
And it's really, you know, it's some stepping stones, it's a fire pit, it's some retaining walls, lawn area, and then the cantilevered portion of the upper porch over, you know, on the rear of the poolhouse.
Right.
So that breaks the plane even though it isn't on the ground with any...
Right, right, we saw that.
So where's the purple?
So that's the purple.
So that's the approved. The purple is the approved. The purple is the approved.
Okay.
Right?
And the red is what you would?
I'm sorry, it's the reverse. I apologize. The red is the approved, and the purple is what we'd like it to be. So you see, we have stepping stones in this area here. We have lawn, some of this area has lawn. We have the fire pit up here. We have some retaining walls. You see these retaining walls here. And then this is the pool house, and off the back of the pool house is this little porch area.
Well, often what we do when we have this kind of problem, we ask that permanent markers be put in place for the new clearing and grading limit lines spaced, that be at ground level so that one mower doesn't get blown up when it goes over it, maybe, but by accident. But also, there would be a spacing. I don't remember what the spacing is, every 10 feet, every 20 feet, or is it a judgment?
I know it was a judgment call by Stephen.
For the environmental coordinator.
Yeah. So I would think, you know, given that what you're doing is trying to say, okay, we're not going to develop anything on the steep slope because we can't effectively do that anyway. But I'd like to have the markers there just in case somebody doesn't get a bright idea in the future. Oh, we'll excavate a bunch of stuff and build, I don't know, another, I know, an accessory apartment, something like that. So that's what I would recommend we do.
Does the rest of the board agree with that?
I think it's, certainly can't hurt.
Like the flush markers?
Yeah. Like we've done that before for wetlands, buffer lines. Where it's important. I think this is important because of the proximity of the wetland, still going down to the limit. I think it's a good idea. I don't know what the spacing is.
Yeah, it sounds 10 feet, sounds pretty.
That's pretty.
It's based on the angle points, and I leave it up to the discretion of the.
Environmental coordinator. Say, as determined by the town environment.
Yeah, I think he's customarily done 25 or 50 feet.
Depends how many, what the run is.
Right.
Lot of angle points involved.
Yeah, I mean, I could see certain places there where it could be, you know, 50 or 100.
So just so we're clear, though, there are sections here where this is a steep slope. If you remember, we walked up and down on those stuffs. So I'm not sure how that gets done, but again, if we could just leave it to the discretion of the environmental coordinator, and they'll figure it out with JMC.
And with that in mind, given, I feel, I have mixed feelings about, well, okay, there was some work done originally to improve the wetland's features of the pond and everything else, and some of it's still there, and some of it has been attacked. And certainly, following up with that and trying to get it back to where it was after it was originally corrected is fine. You know, the question for, I guess, my colleagues is that I always like a 10-year monitoring plan, but in this particular case, you know, it may be a bit of an ask to do all this, you know, all these markers and promote some sort of compromise on, you know, what should be done versus the comment that Steve made that, well, you should have at least a five year monitoring plan.
Well, it also leads to a question on monitoring plans. If we have a transfer of the property ownership, is that customarily something that is noticed to the new purchaser, that they have this obligation? Is that recorded in any way?
Yeah, monitoring plans for wetlands.
Wetlands, no. For stormwater, yes. There's a stormwater agreement that would, in applicable instances, get recorded. For wetland mitigation, monitoring plans typically, no, it doesn't get recorded in the county clerk's office, but it is on record within the town, and it's an obligation.
How about planting plans, same as wetland?
Yeah.
It also generally reports that are reviewed by the environmental coordinator on a yearly basis to ensure that they're kept up.
My concern would be, you know, innocent problem, you know, that occurs because it's just not noticed to the purchaser.
You could do, because there is a lot line adjustment plat that will be filed in the county clerk's office. What the board could do is recommend that a note get added to the plat.
Just have a declaration.
Just noting that the property is subject to.
Right, and that will be recorded, so, okay.
That will be a matter of record.
We have a declaration, not a plat.
For the lot line adjustment, you need to add a plat for the lot line adjustment.
Well, we were doing declarations to at one time.
Clearing and grading, but for the lot line.
Right, right.
Because if the lot line adjustment weren't here, then, yeah, we could just do a declaration.
Is that agreeable to the applicant that we make that note on the plat? I thought you'd agree.
Do I have a choice? I mean, it's not, it's.
We try to be nice.
No, no, we'll just add it. I mean, I think in reality what will happen is that, you know, there will be a pre-purchase of this to be done, you know, that it will already be taken care of so that a new homeowner isn't going to have to deal with that.
Right, right. Well, it's a modest.
That's really the right way, the logical way to do it, so.
And what do we want to do, five year or 10 year?
Okay, five. I'd say five.
I leave it up, if Steve says at least five, then I think five is acceptable. He didn't say 10.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
He always says 10 when he wants 10.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I often say 10.
He doesn't be shy about asking.
10. Okay, I think that in this particular case, having a five-year monitoring plan is acceptable because most of the issues are minor, with the exception of the deck going out over the land. So the, you know, putting a stone wall up to prevent erosion makes sense. Having stepping stones so you don't scuff up a lot of mud when it's wet, those are all reasonable things that were done improperly from a paperwork point of view. So I am okay with it in this particular case.
Okay.
I'd also like to add that I was thinking of three logs. But I'll settle for two.
Do they all be the same size, or do they have to be different size?
Don't ask, don't ask.
I really want to see if the turtle will bounce.
You're supposed to ask for four if you want three.
Are there any comments for the public on this application? Okay, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we will have that plan, that wetland mitigation plan developed. We'll bring it back to the board. I appreciate that.
And what we can do is adopt the motion to draft a resolution sometime in September.
Usually, someone answers.
Janice will say, why not do it in August, because I don't have to do it.
I don't care.
Inside joke, she's retired. Okay, so September 16th, is that the?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, excuse me, 17th. Is there a motion to direct staff accordingly?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I just put one other thing on the record? I just want to thank Janice very much for her service over the years. She has been an incredible consummate professional to deal with. She is a genuinely nice person. She's considerate, she's thoughtful, she's very responsive. I am going to miss you immensely. I really am. I don't think anybody could ever replace you, and I thank you for everything that you've done for us over the years. And good luck in your retirement. Thank you very much.
Here, here, thank you.
Yes, we all agree.
Happy 4th of July.
Nice words. Thank you for that, Steve.
Okay, we move now to our next item, and this is the public hearing on 767 King Street, LLC, Chiselhurst subdivision lot number six, application for a site plan amendment, wetlands permit, steep slopes permit amendment, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, 767 King Street, New York Route 120.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder that I'm recused from this application.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Stephen Rabel. I'm with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberg &amp; Stouth, and I'm here tonight with Lori Babu from Blaze McCoyet Architecture, Dan Thorpe from LaGuardia Design.
Excuse me. Could you speak a little louder or get a little closer to the microphone, because some people can't hear you.
Sure. Is this better?
Is that better?
Is it better?
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely no problem. So I'm here tonight with Lori Babu from Blaze McCoyet Architecture, Dan Thorpe from LaGuardia Design, Alan Pilch from ALP Engineering, and Jack Truman from Pruding &amp; Company Custom Builders. That's our proposed contractor. So we are here tonight for our first public hearing, though it is, I believe, our fourth meeting with the board. Since you last saw us, we appeared before the ERB at their June meeting. They fully endorsed our proposed environmental mitigation plan, and so we're here tonight to open the public hearing. I'm curious if the board for the.
I'm sorry, Steve, on that note, we should have a motion to open the public hearing if you haven't already. I don't think I heard a motion to open.
I didn't do it, Janice.
Yeah. I didn't hear it, so worst-case scenario, we do it twice.
Okay. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Working on all our acoustics here everywhere now tonight.
So since we have been before the board before, but this is the first public hearing, we were curious if the board would like us to give a full presentation of the site, or if, my understanding is that there was a question relating to the clearing and grading limitation line, whether we should present to that and then open this up to questions from the board and the public.
I think it would be probably good if you just gave a quick summary of the project, you know, what you're proposing at this point.
Okay.
Just to bring if there are any interested members of public here so that they understand it.
Sure.
Maybe not all the details that we've seen before. And again, all this information is available, you know, online or in town hall. So maybe an executive summary would be good, and then, of course, any changes since we last saw you, if you would earmark those for us, too.
Sure.
Before you start, I just would like to ask, is there anybody in the public that's interested in this project that's here? Excellent, thank you.
So Lori, if you think you could give.
Do you want to come closer so you can hear better? You're having trouble hearing back there?
When the air kicks on, it's hard to hear.
It's actually not much better up here.
So we have all of our slides, but we'll move through them quickly. And then also, just because I think it's pretty neat, we actually brought in a full three-dimensional model, which is out in the hall if you'd like to take a look and get a better sense of how the site lays out. It is to scale, though the house itself is actually the older initial design, so the one that's before you now is actually a bit smaller. But that change was made a few meetings prior.
The last meeting was reduced.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Lori Babu. I'm with Blaze McCoyet Architecture. This project on 767 King Street was an exciting one for us because we did have the opportunity to work with steep slopes. And one of the things that we wanted to do from the very start was to address the steep slopes with really light hand and to really honor the existing topography, the landscape, and to create a design that integrated into that and really knitted itself into the top topography rather than working against it. So our basic strategy was to divide the program between two stacks of volumes, and Dan, if you can go back one slide for a second there. You can see how within each of these stacks of volumes, the volumes slide from one level to the next to create terraces, covered outdoor living spaces, and green roofs, which were a very prominent feature of the design. Here's the north elevation, which doesn't have any exposure. This is the lakeside elevation. And you can see that the materials were designed to really integrate into the landscape rather than to stand out in contrast with it. This is a view from the side that Dan will speak in a few minutes to the flow channel strategy that we're using as part of our water management strategy. Other view from the approach. And then the red line in a series of plans shows the reduced, or the original footprint that we started with at the beginning of the application process. We've shaved about 1,400 square feet off of the overall building envelope. Quick pass through the, we can probably go through these pretty quickly. These are a couple of technical drawings that indicate how we're going to be executing the green roofs. Just a coverage diagram. This is a project that LaGuardia Design has executed using green roof modules.
Daniel Thorpe, landscape architect of the LaGuardia Design Group.
Detach that.
Yeah, raise it, you don't have to get a backache over this.
Yeah, we don't want any suit over a bed back.
This is just a quick site development, building, coverage, drawing, showing all the different calculations that comprise the conformance of the site. Next one, a little more animated. So this is a quick landscape planting sketch. The idea of the landscape is really to integrate the proposed landscape entirely with the existing woodland. One thing we really fell in love with when we first visited the site were the existing American beech stands, and that's the tree on the left. That's the dominant species of native tree within the woodland that commingles with red maple, gray birch, white oak, all of which we're proposing to revegetate all the disturbed areas around the house with. I'm on the right side, and that top photo shows how instead of proposing mowed lawn above the sanitary field and at the lawn panel at the bottom of the house on the back terrace, we're going to be using a fertilizer-free native fescue meadow mix of seed that would create biodiversity within the site. Beyond revegetating this site with a deep interest in the local flora and fauna, we have to address the idea of future erosion and how to mitigate that through not just erosion control methods, which you'll see on the next page, which involve these flow channels, but also plant material. The upper right is Pennsylvania sedge. That's an existing native grass that is already thriving within the woodland. This grass is like steel wool when it flourishes, and this is a great erosion control method that we successfully used in the past on steep slopes. The sedge grass combined with, on the next slide, you'll see the idea of these flow channels where we would be taking some of the rock from the site and using it to stabilize the edges of the building. The blue arrows show the existing flow channels on site and how they will ride around, especially the right side of the building. So that is a major impact point that we want to make sure preserves, that we preserve over time with these rock channels.
So the channel to the top that'll be piped and put under the roadway?
There's all different stormwater treatment methods for how we're handling the site runoff. This would be anything that doesn't enter Alan's stormwater system.
That area right there?
Yeah.
Is that underground or alongside the driveway?
That's alongside the driveway.
And then piped underneath the driveway?
Correct. And then there's a, yeah, and then there's a permeable driveway.
There you go.
Anyway, yeah, so it's the idea of just integrating flow channels along the edges of the house for event erosion. Again, just addressing and identifying where the water's coming from. You'll see that if you visit the model in the hallway, you'll see the watersheds in three dimensions. More of our planting plans. The red on the drawing shows the trees that need to be removed either for the house construction or the implementation of the sanitary system.
Sanitary system is here?
Correct. Sanitary system requires a rise in grade, so we're really trying not to cut down any tree we don't have to. And every tree we are cutting down, we're trying to replace in kind with a like species of native deciduous tree. And you'll see in our planting plan is pretty robust, especially it goes back all the way to King Street. But the diversity of the trees selection came up with the board and with Stephen Coleman, so we've addressed that through increasing that diversity. Our first proposal was for mostly American beech, and now we've moved, we've kept a lot of American beech, but we've also included many more native trees as well in an understory of native shrubbery. And then this shows those planting plan back to King Street and how we're really trying to, from the beginning of the stretch of the driveway, engage the existing woodland by planting more natives closer to the arrival experience.
There was some issue when we were out there for your site visit. This area here, it looked like there were a lot of invasives and. This area here, it looked like there were a lot of invasives and the flora, the roses and all that sort of thing. And I think the comment was that, I wasn't sure when I was reading the material, whether or not you plan to remove that or you think it's functioning as a visual barrier. What's the plan with that?
Any, any non-native invasive, like a multiflora rose, would be removed and revegetated with the native ground covers we're proposing, the acented fern, Pennsylvania sedge, lowbush blueberry. Any woody material that's actually stabilizing the slope there, we, I think we would leave. That constitutes the root mat.
But when you replace it with sedge and some of these low growing species, it's not going to provide the same level of performance that we have right now with invasives. You know, the roses were fairly high, as I recall, four or five feet high.
We have bayberry as well, another native shrubs that's part of our wetland mitigation drawings.
So these listed, shown here, these are the trees?
Yeah.
But they don't represent the shrubbery that you're putting in either?
Well, fortunately, this looks like not the ERB proposal. But what you have in your packages is more updated, and it actually shows the rain gardens and swales and a much more comprehensive and robust revegetation that's happening along the driveway.
Including shrubbery.
Including shrubbery.
Including shrubbery and understory.
Yep.
And then just to help explain the proposed construction as it relates to the existing topography of the site, we did a quick site section showing how the house will terrace with the land. We're really trying to tie back, marry back into existing grades as quickly as possible around the building. And these are just some site view studies.
So this diagram indicates the relationship of the project to surrounding homes. Now, you can see the closest house is approximately 490 feet from the proposed building. And while you do see it while you're traveling on the flag driveway to our property, we don't anticipate that there would be any view of the proposed structure at such a distance.
Oh, sorry.
And this is just, I think we can move through these pretty quickly, just a series of images taken along King Street, showing that the project would not be visible at all from King Street. And then in just a moment, we'll turn down. Here's the entrance to the driveway. So you can see one neighbor to the north, the red house here. And again, we would have plantings that would be screening this house from the roadway.
Are those the rose bushes you were talking about?
Yep.
So what would be the reason to not try to retain existing vegetation if it's serving? I know it's invasive, but if it is serving a purpose, it's screening and holding erosion, is there any benefit to keeping it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I know you guys proposed removing it. I'm not fighting with you, I'm just asking the question.
No, I think, you know, there's certain, there's certain infield decisions that need to be made, site-specific, to the benefits of the existing non-natives that are out there. So I totally agree with that. So anything that's really helping without hurting would be kept in place.
I guess the only comment I would add, Greg, is that sometimes you have invasives that are doing a job in one place, but then they move to another place.
True. I guess, like you said, it's probably a condition, you have to walk down the field and say yes, no, yes.
Yeah, because we, and we could look at it today, and in August it would be, it could become totally different.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think that Dick's point, no small mistake, and Dick, is that it's fine there, but it's the polygates in the air, and then it's, then you've got invasives that are spreading throughout the forest.
Yep. I mean, they're invasive. I know, we've had, we've all had this invasive argument, you know, just because they're invasive doesn't mean they're bad. It just means it's not naturally there. And some people's point of view.
That's not necessarily true.
And some people's point of view.
No, but there are non-native plants that aren't necessarily invasive. There are invasive species that just really take over and become a monoculture in the environment, like the Norway maples.
The Norway maples.
Bamboo.
Bamboo. But people, but again, but, but again, there are, there are benefits to Norway maples, there are benefits to...
I like them.
Yeah, so that's why, but I think we're all in agreement.
Yeah.
We got it.
And I think at this point, we could probably, I guess we've got one or two more images here. This is a view across the lake, so we're at the shoreline of this property, looking at adjacent properties in kind of the most stripped-down conditions. When that foliage fills in, this is an approximation of what you'd be seeing from across the lake.
Can I hold on to that view for a second? Because it looks like, it looks like this view implies that there is no understory here? I mean, there's low understory, and then there's, you know, there's a leaf out above. Are you expecting you will have that kind of view between the understory and the top of the tree of the lake?
Are you talking about our site or across?
Your site.
Right here. Right in here.
No, nothing proposed to be removed beyond the grading and clearing limit line?
So we had, we had this conversation last time, I think, about the pool and sunlight in the pool.
Yeah.
My concern was that the property owner lives on the property and realizes that it's pools in the shade and that there is, there's nothing in the application that says that there can be anything cleared beyond the clearing, grading limit line.
Right.
And as a consequence, the applicant comes in and takes the trees out anyway. It'd be better to address that ahead of time. Have you looked at that to see whether...
Yeah.
Per the deed, we're only allowed to remove trees within the building envelope, and that portion of the site below the house, that's a lake word of the house, is deeded as conservation usement. So the deed restricts any tree removal in that area.
So the design, do you, do you agree that this could be a concern though? That the trees that you are not allowed to clear because it's outside the building area are going to shade the pool in the location the pool's in? It's a question.
So our understanding from the client is, is that they're content with the location of the pool as it is. If it's shady, it might be nice, but they understand that if they decide that it's shady and they would like sun, that's too bad. They're not...
Do they understand, do they understand the consequences of where it is though, that it will be shady?
My understanding is that, yes, they do.
Okay. It's not going to be a surprise to them?
No.
Okay.
No.
So the construction, it looks like, if you go to the section, I thought the site section was really helpful, showed the building. It's essentially a series of four retaining walls marching down the slope that make two building blocks with bridges in between. And you're going to work from the top down because you're right up against, to build this excavate from the top down? The top of the slope down because you can't work from the bottom up because there's no room down there, right?
Right.
Well, yeah, this, this is a real big issue for someone, so we need more information on this.
Sure. So we have a representative from our contractor, Pruding, Jack Truman, who can speak to construction and phasing. I think he did submit some phasing plan, but certainly he's able to answer some of these questions.
I think it's also important to give some historical context on this application, what was previously approved, and where the clearing and grading limit lines came from. When we do those clearing and grading limit lines, they are anticipating additional space. They're not anticipating that the building's going to come up right up to the line. We're anticipating space realistically for construction access, construction vehicles, excavation, et cetera. So my concern is that we are really pressing up against that, and we have an application here that would not otherwise be going forward in this, anywhere near this state or this location, but for the fact that we've had a determination that there was substantial improvement and legally you have a right to move forward. But nonetheless, there was a comment, you know, we're doing our best to move away from the slopes right away as soon as possible. I'm not so sure that really is the case because the pool is in fact going down the slope and down that slope that's down toward the wetlands. The whole reason why we have this 150-foot area in our regulations now is that we recognize that proximity of slopes and wetlands and buffers, when they're together, that's when these areas need the most protection. So that's the historical context. So I, to a certain extent, the initial proposal that you put in, I think you've drawn it back some, was pushing everything right up to the clearing, grading limit line. To Thomas' point, I think it's very unrealistic, no matter what you tell us, that construction would only take place from the other side and that there wouldn't be any impact. So we need to look at that carefully and make sure we have enough room for reality in the field. And I think the town engineer also has comments with regard to making sure we understand what the conditions are for the rock and stability and understanding how the walls are going to work, because the walls range anywhere from two feet to 14 feet, and how they're going to work on that slope. And make sure that, and then, of course, this was all going to tie in also with Sabrina's comments in terms of just the numbers in terms of coverage and development. This is, you know, notwithstanding the fact that you are grandfather on a development, still you are really asking for something substantially larger than what was approved before in terms of coverage, development. And I would also argue, based on when I was looking at the prior drawings, even coming down the slope toward the water and the wetland with this pool, the two pools, the spa and the pool, pool more so. So we need to look at that. So there are no determinations on this, but I think it's something that you really need to provide some additional information on this.
So we're happy to address certainly the construction elements. I don't know if, if the board thinks it would be helpful to work off of this, or if you'd like to go through an overhead of the clearing, grading limitation line to get some geographical sense of it.
That would be good.
Okay. So we can bring that up. And I would note that while we are larger than the prior approval, we're still well within the zoning requirement for coverage, and that coverage calculation actually includes the green roofs as well as impervious driveway that's not even on our property, which is consistent with the code.
Right.
But we're still well, well below what's required for site plan approval.
But this was a conservation development, and therefore it had certain environmental constraints assigned to it, and they were very special. So although the code will give you certain elements with zoning, this was a conservation development. So therefore, when the board was given consideration for approval back in, way back in the years, 2002, '99, whatever it was, those years that we're looking at it, that's also a historical, important historical context. So remember that this is a conservation development. It is not a standard development.
Understood. And that's, I mean, certainly the design professionals can speak to this better than I can, but the building was designed really to work with the site, be sensitive to the environment. We are within the clearing and grading limitation line, we're within the building envelope. I will caveat that the existing driveway, which was built by the prior owner, I'm told is a couple feet outside the limitation line. But our proposal for the new work would be within the clearing limitation line. So we have that up, I suppose. Jack, if you'd like to speak to some of the anticipated construction techniques and phasing that's going to allow us to operate within the line? And then I guess if the board or the public have any follow-up questions, we're more than happy to answer.
But this sketch that we have up here doesn't show the pools.
Alan, Dan, do you have Allen's plans?
You did some very last in the presentation.
Yeah, that's good. I think that's good.
So just one quick question. What is the reasoning for this big jog? Remind me, I forgot. Is there something there?
Well, that's, that's historically, that's the 2002 clearing, grading limit line. I believe it may have been around two trees, there are two existing trees there.
So something's trying to be protected.
Yeah, yeah, something's protected. My understanding, recollection when we walked out there, that was where it was really slippery.
It was hard to get up the hill.
Yeah, and I think that was the area that was extraordinarily steep.
I think you're right.
Jack, feel comfortable talking about some...
Yeah, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Yeah, I think in particular, some of the concerns that you guys...
Have your full name, please.
Jack Truman, Pruding and Company.
Thank you.
Some of the concerns that you've had, we had as well, and that was some of the intention to bring that footprint in, to allow for some access around the building. It is certainly, the challenges of the slope are going to impact the sequencing of, you know, typical sequencing. These pools, the hot tub and the, and the pool, wouldn't want to happen much later in the process. But we are anticipating that the shells for these would need to be done on the front end and back our way out. So that's certainly a logistics challenge that we've put a lot of thought into. In terms of some of these limit lines, you know, we would have these surveyed, and in particular in this area and other heavily trafficked areas, those would be chain-linked off so that those areas, the construction activity would not encroach beyond that. Other areas that are not necessarily as heavily trafficked would be an orange fence to define that line.
Well, I'm curious. Have you done projects like this before where you're starting halfway down a steep slope and then building it back up?
We have worked on steep slopes. This one is, is a little bit unusual, but we have, we did a project recently in Hastings on Hudson that was very similar, actually a little more challenging in terms of it required temp shoring to back our way up. So the supportive excavation was a large part there that we don't anticipate having with this, this project.
So can I ask, are you going to go around this footprint or are you going to go through it to build it?
We're going to go through it. Yeah, we're going to go through it. We have, exactly.
Bench down and then build back up.
Exactly. Yeah. The intention is to bench down and then work our way out from, from the slope back.
I would think at a minimum, we would want a very detailed construction sequence on this project.
With all due respect to the contractors, and have a good idea and you have good knowledge in how you're going to build it, but I would recommend, in this case, it's up to the board to decide finally. I would recommend you get a geotech engineer to look at this and come up with a good sequencing plan too, to see what type of materials and equipment and size of the footings that you are going to need before you start, you start speculating what you think it can do. So I would highly recommend that. Has anyone given that any thought? Do you have a geotech out there? Well-versed in foundations, footings, and soils?
You're not going to do that without a cost estimate anyway, right? I mean, you're going to know what kind of...
I mean, that's going to dictate pretty much everything that the contractors can build, because I know for a fact the contractor's not just going to design it on the run, he's going to need plans from an engineer, and the engineer's going to look to the guidance of a geotech guy and a structural guy and a foundation guy before anything gets done. So I would recommend to do that sooner than later, so that's going to let you know how much cost you need to put into it for the footings and the foundations and the sequencing. And I would recommend he should come up with the sequencing in conjunction with the contractor and then present that to the board to see how we do.
I think that's a good, have you done the borings here to see what you're into?
We've done deep test holes. Alan wants to speak.
Sort of.
But no, no borings have been done.
So that's way upstream anyway. It's in the...
Well, we've been down, we've been down, actually, we did some recently down here near the building corners, down where the pool is, that were actually very favorable. But yes, I agree with your...
Keep in mind, this is, that range between 35% to 45% slope depth.
This is, these are good to see.
So I agree totally also with what you've said.
And work with you, the contractor, because obviously you know the means and methods, but they have to do the design.
Agreed.
And one of the, again, one of the issues that we will look at, at least I will be looking at, will be when we get that information, just how difficult this might be and how realistic these lines are in terms of what impacts we might see. Again, in my opinion, you're asking for much more than what was granted before from the standpoint of coverage and development. And, and some of that is in this area of this downslope, which is extreme downslope. So we need to be really careful about this. Certainly, it's been done before, and it's been done in this town before, but we really need to look at that very carefully. This is a very, very sensitive environmental area, as you know, and this is a very highly rated trout lake. It's, it's waters that go into the Ken... It's, uh, it's waters that go into the Kansco Reservoir, which is the last stop for New York City's water supply before it heads down to the city. So, this is, um, it's not just some isolated pond or lake somewhere that, uh, doesn't flow out. So, we need to be really careful about this.
This is the, the, I think that this is the kind of environment that you're being, you are being asked to work in, which, um, in my experience, uh, really makes one think about piles and pylons and stick building this thing, uh, rather than retaining walls. And that's a, it's obviously a consideration, the architecture and so on and so forth, doesn't necessarily have to dramatically change the look of it. It's the structural frame that you wrap, right? And I think that's, it's possible that that could create a lot less disturbance on the site if you were to do something like that.
So, we understand. We think the request for a geotech engineer to work in consultation with our contractor is a reasonable one. We would consent to, to providing that report to the board. Um, with that in mind, is, is there a continued question for our contractor, any additional details that you'd at least like us to note for the future report, or any questions you have at this time? Or would you prefer to wait until we provide the detailed report?
Well, I think the detailed report and what would be helpful, I think, is having that construction sequence which flows from that report as part of your next submission. I think those two things together would be very important for the town engineer, for us to, to consider. I think if it's, if you don't do it together and it's kind of segmented, it loses, first of all, loses time field. So, uh, I think it might be more important to do it that way.
Okay.
But, I mean, obviously, you've got some real challenges here. We knew that from the get-go, and, and you guys are, you know, got some very, very creative solutions here.
Yeah.
Which really are very impressive, and, um, but at the same time, there are some issues here that I, I personally think are still very, are significant, and we have to make sure that they, they work.
Are you designing concrete for thermal mass? Is that why it's all concrete, or couldn't go to a lighter wood construction?
Are you speaking specifically to the retaining walls?
Yeah.
I think we would be open to a lighter weight construction conceivably.
Unless you were doing some, you know, thermal mass with the heat and the sun, I wasn't sure if that's related to the passive-
On the, on the, the house foundation, I think the thermal mass of the concrete would be valuable, and I, I think we would plan on having a concrete foundation for the house. But elsewhere, I think we'd be open to dialogue.
Yeah.
Well, but the foundation is, is, is the hard part here.
Well, that was the piling.
I, I just, I wanted to, to bring your attention to the-
And I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, just so that there's no confusion on my comment before, forgive me. I wasn't necessarily suggesting stick built, I meant, I mean, it could be steel, right?
Right. Yeah, you're trying to keep cement mixers out. I understand.
Piles and steel and build a frame out that way. Or, right. So, anyway, sorry, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to point out that this diagram may be a little bit misleading because we're looking at a roof plan of a project that has multiple cantilevers. So, if we look at the basement plan here, you can see that we're pulled in 10 feet minimum from the clearing and grading limit line on all sides.
Right.
While there are a few retaining walls that, that come close to it, um, the house itself, uh, does have some room to navigate around it.
Right.
Good, that's good.
Yep. Good point.
That's good.
Well, another critical thing with the geotech, we need to let you know, has to be a geologist as well to let you know whether the structural integrity of the rock is good to just pin it into it and therefore eliminate foundations altogether, once you have been done. But that's up to your geotech guy to do, so make sure he's well-versed in geology as well.
Right.
Which New York State does require now, has a P E license, and now, not only that, they require S E's. So, New York State is very well ahead of the game. A guy that's strictly in structures, you do not call it P E anymore, you call that S E.
Structural engineering?
Yes. You have to take a two-day, 16-hour course in structures, and it's probably one of the most brutal exams one will ever take. So, they just implemented that in the state, so you might want to check with engineers with that qualification.
Bob, did you want to go through any other comments that you might?
I'm hoping they can read them and say they agree with them. I will-
I think we join you in that. Are there any issues on there, Alan, uh, on the engineering comments from Bob? No, I've actually discussed it with Bob. Okay. Um, you know, the, I mean, a lot of it just deals with provision-
Alan, could you step to the mic?
Sure. Alan Pilch, no, a lot of the, the comments that he had to deal with primarily detailing of, you know, providing additional information. And we had an opportunity to discuss over the past couple of days as well. I'll, I'll just point out that the, the, the offset that you see from the clearing and grading limit line was actually a discussion that we had previously with D E P when we met them out there, and that's one of the reasons that the building was shrunk and moved like at least 10 feet away from the edges, that's what they requested. So, I just wanted to point that out as well.
Can I say just some of the highlights, I think, are important?
Yeah, sure, absolutely, yeah.
Um, I had this comment in a similar application, it was a residential with a complex stormwater system. I'd recommend, in this case, that they do post bonds and stormwater maintenance, right? In light of the fact that it is a residential due to complexity-
Yes.
-of the stormwater system, so I do recommend that to the planning board.
Right. I, I think it's a good recommendation.
And a lot of the other items are really just looking at as far as constructability. Uh, the stormwater report, I'm, I'm fine with, it's acceptable. So, a lot of these are basically technical items, as Alan had said. G7 is in lines with what I was speaking about before with the wall you have. Keep in mind that wall's about 240 feet long, goes from 2 to 14 feet on a 45% slope, so, uh, when the geotech guys out there, you might want to have, take a look at this too as well, because that's going to be some di- some design on that.
Where, where's the high point of that wall? Is it over on the western side of the?
Yes, basically, yes.
Of the house?
It's almost like midstream of the wall. If you look at the wall, it's separate divided into, that's almost in the middle of the wall, that's where the cut is the most, and the bank would is the highest.
It's the wall on the left side of the driveways, you're driving past the- So, that, that builds up the driveway? Correct. Gives you the pad for the driveway. That's where it occurs.
Yeah, well, that's a cut, right?
Well, it's cut and fill, I guess, right?
It's going to be cut, that's actually, that wall's going to be on the high side. When you drive it up the driveway, you're going to see a 14-foot wall.
There's a wall. It varies in height. Correct.
Two to 14.
Right.
So, that, I just wanted to mention those items, I'll hand it over to Alan.
Yeah, I mean, we, we were fine with a lot of the comments about benching in the driveway. The driveway is proposed to be permeable, you know, we had, uh, the original approval from 2002, it was 2003 when I worked on it, it was supposed to be gravel or gravel pave two, but we're considering other permeable surfaces such as like perma-drive or some equivalent. So, uh, the amount of runoff off that driveway may be quite minimal in the first place, but that is one of the, um, uh, you know, we talked about benching it in order to promote infiltration, we're absolutely fine with that, and we'll provide profiles to show how that will be done as well. Um, I'm just trying to think what other comments. A lot of the other ones dealt with, um, uh, just providing additional information that were contained on other plans that were done, let's say, by LaGuardia with, with regard to the, you know, the originally approved clearing and grading limit line, which I think we already presented to you today. Actually, it was on one of the drawings that we had here.
I bet you'll be going over that too.
That was the one from the 2000s.
You want to see that, right?
Oh, yeah. Yes. Correct. Um, that's fine. Um, now, the rest of it dealt with details where we're found providing, we've, we already provided a detail for porous pavement, and we decided, we discussed with Bob of doing a section across the planters along the, between the, the house and the driveway through all the planters, then show one example of a planter, rather do each individual planter, but we'll provide dimensions on everything, so that when, uh, the, the town is out, or Terry Rowe is out, or whoever's out, just wanted to confirm it, they can do that. We'll do the same with the green roofs.
That was the reason I recommend the inspection piece, at least for the stormwater, because Terry will be out there quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
You have all these complex-
Yeah.
-green roofs, stormwater planters, porous pavement, rain gardens, electric retention facility, R O B facility, level spreader, so there's many, many stormwater facilities on site.
A lot of it, again, is just providing-
Right.
-details and dimensions and information. Is there a timeframe on the, um, information regarding the, uh, the bridge? I know it was deferred, and we haven't done it yet, but do we know when that might, uh, be looked at and tested? I think the applicant's going to-
How you gave Alan all the information for the design drawings?
Right.
And all the calculations to them?
I think we were looking, we're concerned with whether or not there was any degradation in the condition of the wood roof, of the wood, wood bridge.
The bridge could take a concrete truck during construction.
Great, 30,000-pound concrete truck.
Yeah, that's a weird word.
They tend to be more than 80 sometimes, though. Right, if it's not sitting in the ravine, we know it's pretty solid.
Well, they gave that to Alan, you said you're going to retain the structural engineer to take a look at it.
Yes, last I heard, that's correct.
That's right.
It's in progress.
Yeah. Laurie says it's in progress, right? Okay, thank you.
Have the geotech guy look at it.
We provided the information that Bob had sent us, we're right. Right, okay.
I'm just curious, how far can you pump concrete these days?
Of course.
I think I'll ask Jack Truman.
That's a question that doesn't have to be answered right now, but if the bridge is insufficient, then don't drive the truck over, obviously, but you probably could figure out whether you could pump the concrete.
That may be.
Do you want to ask it the public?
Yes, yeah, we got there, yeah. We'll, we'll look into that.
Probably, probably right.
But I think the answer will be once we know that, that the bridge is still sound, that, that will be okay.
As long as it's sound and it doesn't make sounds when things-
That's a good thing, I would agree. Did you want to make any, any comments, Sabrina?
Nope.
Okay. Do we have comments from the public on this? Yes, come on up.
Hi, I'm Heather Emel, I'm at 773 King Street, which is one of the neighboring properties. Um, I had some questions. I did go down to the town a few weeks ago and looked at all the files that had been submitted since the initial meeting. Some of the pictures were shown here today. I was having a hard time seeing the view. I think we saw some pictures of the, the red house that's adjacent to King Street. Um, I didn't, couldn't get the perspective from my house, and I didn't see any pictures.
Are you going to the south?
I'm right sort of, um, beyond the, the red house, and actually, yeah, I think my, I think my house were the two gray boxes that were shown on one of the earlier maps that I was trying to follow.
Press it, not at anyone's eyes.
I think there was another, um, there was another image that was a lot clearer that showed two gray boxes.
What's your address again?
773.
Is that it?
Oh, I think, yeah.
You must be the next one down.
Yeah, I think those two boxes there, I think that's my house and then the garage to the left.
To the south, okay, your direction to the south.
So, the other neighbor that I think you were looking at the picture was-
To the north, yes.
-closer to the entrance on King Street. So, I didn't see any pictures with respect to the view, um, from the vantage point of my house was sort of one question. Um, another concern that I had, um, my house-
So, do you have a view right now across the ravine?
There's one, one view. It may be the last photo. Is it, is it, is it possible for you to go on the applicant's property, take some pictures and do some renderings?
Well, we have to get the applicant's permission, I guess.
Sure.
Well, no, they have to give it.
No, I thought you meant coming on my part.
Death, I'm sorry, please, continue on.
Okay. Um, so, actually, if you keep going down that, that path there, the driveway, my house is actually much closer to the driveway than the house that we're looking at here, so I had some concerns as well about-
I think this is the image of your house, it, it just doesn't read very well.
Okay. I guess I couldn't see the sightline from the side of the applicant's house to my house and whether I would see anything particularly, I guess you were talking about this wall. Um, I can see the bridge from my property, so I don't know how far beyond the bridge the wall you were speaking about earlier would be, and whether I would be able to see, um, the house from this vantage point.
The plan that showed where the pictures were?
The one that had the view, the pictures.
The one, yeah, there was the planet, go back?
Yep.
Can you go back?
The picture there.
So, then, is this your home right here?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Yep.
It's a view across the ravine, back to the ledge.
Right, right.
Yeah, you can see the cut throughout the house.
I think the bridge is probably over here, I can see that.
The wall bends around the hill away from you.
So, the wall is-
Can you follow the wall on the?
Yeah. Just the wall starts here and then it bends around the hill, so, if that's any-
So, it's not visible from the bridge?
No.
Well, from the bridge, the beginning of it might be.
Yeah, on, on the approach, if you were like right here, but I think from way, from way back here, if you can see the bridge, the wall starts after the bridge and bends around the hill, so.
Okay.
I mean, it may be helpful to all stand out at the model too and take a look at kind of where, where your house would be positioned relative to the project.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. And then also, um, I mean, we have, uh, you know, pretty significant amount of, um, trees proposed right along the driveway.
The picture that you had with the landscape plan, it looked like the area that's right in front of my house is pretty barren.
Not the most up-to-date one, unfortunately, but the package that they have, it's more up-to-date.
And it actually goes right past my bedroom windows, pretty close to where the driveway is, so, um, obviously, we'll expect a construction and noise and trucks and on a permanent basis as well, but screening-
I recall from the sidewalk, that was, your, your home was quite-
Yeah. I think you can actually see into it, uh, to my windows as well.
Yeah, picture 10 is this type of spot.
Or is it here?
I think that was the picture we saw of the house in the cylinder.
Yeah, I think this is my house here.
Yeah.
It was pretty, pretty barren, my bedroom's right here. So, I did want to make sure that there is both temporary screening during construction and as well as permanent evergreen, um, screening, both to minimize noise and obviously, um, view as well.
Yeah. Yeah, we discussed a couple of different options for that, whether it just be a green screen or whether it actually be an acoustical panel that goes along perhaps that section closest to your house. Yeah, so right along here.
What, but you're going to hear an engine coming by every once a car, and it's a gravel driveway, it's going to be-
But stable, it's, well, during construction, it would be gravel, but- It, yeah. It's gravel now, but the intention is to use pervious pavers. Stabilized, though. Which should be wider than gravel.
Right, and there'd be cars coming up and down the driveway to a house, essentially after construction.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was the driveway. One other issue with respect to the driveway, I don't know what the plans are for utility lines to the new house. My wires actually come across from the red house that we saw in the picture, across the driveway to a pole, um, near my property line. And, um, one, I think those wires may be, uh, potentially in the way of some of the in the way of some of the construction equipment that would need to come in, and I wanted to know if the applicant is burying their wires and if they would propose to also relocate the wires that come across the driveway currently.
Okay.
Good point.
That's a good point. I believe all knew subdivision, when this came in, it usually states right in chapter 113.
Underground.
Only utilities must be underground.
But we saw this other issue of the existing wires coming across, so that's a safety issue, make sure that
Trust that.
Yep.
Yeah, they're there.
Are those wires right, right away, at the end of the street?
Those are, yeah.
That's at the street.
That's at the street, there's actually wires that come through a little bit further down, through another couple of trees through that house area.
Yeah, I just saw.
Now, where do those wires?
Those go through to the pole that's
That go to you.
That go to me. And I have had issues in the past with trees that have fallen down and taken out those wires, and this neighbor has refused access to Con Ed to replace the electrical wires, so this last summer I was without power for a week while we worked that out. So, if it's possible to bury those wires as part of the other project, I think that would make the most sense, because this is going to continue to create problems, and they're not on my property, so I had a lot of issues, because I just, they wouldn't allow access.
Okay.
How would your, how would the wires for the project that you're proposing to build, where would they come from? Pass, over, over this property here, or come from the street?
Straight off King.
Yeah. Straight from the road.
I've heard power not coming off the King and going across all the people's property, seems odd.
Yeah.
Right, right now, it does cross from the property to the north, cross the, I don't even know what's on our property there, and over to the corner of your property.
Yeah, and then they're buried from my
And then they're buried from there, but I think our, our electrical service would come from the street.
And go down the driveway.
Is there a way to clean it up for the neighbor?
Okay, so where do the wires come now to your property? They, they come from this house across?
No, I think they follow
I think they follow from around here.
Well, this is the red house here, right?
Yeah, 765 King.
So, it does that somehow?
Correct.
And you guys are going to come off this way, right?
We'll come this way.
Yeah, the pole is directly in front of my house, so if you're coming from King Street, you could just stop at my pole and, and continue on down the driveway.
If you have one thing to say about that, I actually did a mic comment, and you might want to make a utility plan, I don't know who's going to do the utility.
Right, we, we
Well, you're going to have, let me finish, you got telecommunications, you got no gas?
Correct, those, those utilities will come off the street.
You got no gas, telecommunications, cable, keep in mind, too, water service, and you have to show good details if you saw that's going over the bridge, and you got to take into account for the loading on that, so.
I'll just say
Keep that in mind.
Currently, there's a water service line that runs right through there, just before the bridge, and that's where we're going to take the water, this is a six-inch line that bring the water surface, you know, on the ground, you know, attached to the bridge, essentially to the house.
Well, you'll need special connections and special preparations, because, as you know, you can't freeze, so you might want to show special details on that.
Yes, we will.
And then I just wanted to note, you know, I would appreciate being notified of any extra loud noises during construction, I assume there'll be some days of excavation and blasting, and given the location by the lake and the woods, everything does echo and is exponentially louder than I think it would be in a normal setting. And would want to understand, too, what the hours of construction would be.
Right, that'll be part of the construction sequencing that we were going to ask for.
Okay.
And again, also, whether we get into the details of if it's blasting or it's just chipping, or how, where we're going to excavate the area.
Okay, thank you. And then, just based on the initial meeting I came to, I know there was a lot of focus and attention on maintenance of the environmental systems that are being proposed, and I guess also with respect to the planting plan, was just curious if there'd been any development on how that's going to be maintained or guaranteed to be maintained by any future owners.
We normally have it bonded, so a management plan, maintenance plan is actually usually bonded.
Okay.
So, it's at least five years, that's what's in the code, we have discretion to go up to 10 years.
Okay.
So, when we get to that point, we can, we'll look at it and consider it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
How do you get to your, where's your driveway to this house?
So, it's, this is a really interesting subdivision that happened, everybody in this subdivision is pretty much landlocked, and we all have easements on other properties. So, I come in from the other side of King Street, and I have an easement to use a driveway for the neighbor's property
Here?
That goes down, yeah.
Neighbor.
Yes, he actually owns, I believe, three parcels, so he's got like 20 acres there, so the
So, you have access from this neighbor and electricity from this one?
Yes. It was a genius plan.
We wouldn't do that today.
Thank you.
Where is this team not conforming? It's my life.
Okay. Are there any other comments from public, from public on this application? If not, we'll, I guess, adjourn the hearing and wait for the additional information to come back. We can, I guess, tentatively schedule something September 17 through the October meeting.
You can do September. It really depends on your timeframe, or if you think you'll be able to submit information for, you know, the UTEC analysis and construction phasing.
Let me ask, what would be the submission deadline for the September 17 meeting?
August 26.
So, let's go to October.
Yes, I thought I'd come to make you more sensible.
I, I think we'd like to try to shoot for September if we can, and we'll adjourn if, if we need additional time, but we've got a couple months.
Well, yeah. Month and a half.
Month and a half.
What was the submission deadline?
August 26.
All right, so we'll schedule tentatively for September 17.
If you do not think you will make the August 26 deadline, if you can submit a, a letter requesting an adjournment to the October meeting, that would be very helpful, so we can save time and money with the paperwork.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening and happy fourth.
Thank you.
Same deal.
We got the model outside.
Yeah, you want to see that? We should do that.
We drove it a long way.
Yeah, why don't we go? Come on, guys. So, just take a moment here, we'll go, take a look at the model.
The ones that go to midnight.
Okay, thank you. We're back, our next item is a resolution, this is the resolution for the Monaco Realty LLC, this is an application for a site development plan amendment, tree removal permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approval 13 station place. So, we have had the resolution presented to us, I think we've all had a chance to review it, are there
I had a quick question.
Joe?
On page five, there was a, a bracketed comment in my draft, maybe I didn't see the latest draft, but were those, was that bracketed comment addressed and has it been removed?
Oh, yeah, that's
Page five, it's, it's taken care of? Okay.
Yeah, that still is in the most recent version, that should be taken out. Talk about condition 11.
Yeah, and then are the shoulds changed into shalls and all of that?
Okay.
I'm going to take Steve Coleman's name off, because he's not here.
All right. Okay. Any other comments, changes, problems, issues?
No.
If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have minutes, April 2, 2019.
On the first page, line 53, just, the intent is right, I just think it doesn't read very well. Mr. Curley stated that the strike intention of, and put in realistic
What?
That the realistic intent
Intent of the guidelines?
Oh, I'm sorry, that the realistic outcome of the guidelines, that the realistic outcome of the guidelines, and then strike to achieve, the realistic outcome of the guidelines was not excellent design. But rather, it was to insert, avoid, and strike protect from, avoid bad solutions.
So, you're saying
Read that again?
Yes.
Before you do, I have a question.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Yeah, probably.
I have a question. So, does that mean that the guidelines are never going to achieve excellent design?
Realistic outcome is not a realistic outcome, I didn't say never, I just said a realistic outcome is not.
In this case?
Realistic, okay, I guess realistic.
Because
Okay, gotcha.
Because guidelines don't guarantee it.
Right, well, getting perfection is an infinite cost.
So, did, did you get that okay?
Could you say it again, please?
Mr. Curley stated that the realistic outcome of the guidelines was not excellent design, but rather it was to avoid bad solutions.
Anyone else, anything?
Yeah, on page two. I guess, on line 43, there's a comma after, after comment, I don't think it belongs there. And then on 47, Mr. Brownell stated he felt that Mr. Napoli's flat roof was discordant, I think it's with the rest, is that it, too?
Yep.
How could I have been so careless?
Anyone else, anything?
I have one more somewhere.
Number one on seven, page seven. Paragraph starting line six, second line, facilities and where, and whether or not there would be strike A and strike issue, so it would read whether or not there would be redundancy wherein orgy towers
Right.
Would no longer be needed. And then insert, no longer be needed, but dismantled.
But dismantled?
Not dismantled, but not dismantled, they no longer be needed, but they wouldn't be dismantled. In other words, the intent was
You're going to leave them up?
If you're, yeah, they're going to leave them up.
There's a typo in line 10 of that paragraph, the first word, should that be the instead of?
Should be the, right.
I'm back on page six, the, let's see, line, line six, it starts off with the board, which board?
Where are you?
Page six of seven, line six, I'll make it line seven, it, it starts off with the board felt that recreational marijuana, which board, the planning board or the town board?
So, you want to put, insert planning board?
Which I think it was.
Yeah, I think it was us.
All right, and then later, we say, follow the whole sentence, recreational, recreational marijuana retail facilities were very different businesses in comparison, vape shop, shops, and as such, require a separate risk management.
Assessment?
Assessment would be nice. Or even a separate risk assessment.
Assessment that leads to management, through zoning.
More? Okay, as amended, is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 2, 2019?
So moved.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We move now to the minutes of April 16, 2019.
On page four, line 40, see, Brownell advised that the steep slopes application, probably said that, but is, wasn't it an evaluation that we wanted? Was there a conclusion that we needed an application?
I spoke to him earlier, if you go one sheet one
Yeah.
Line 56.
Right.
And I felt, based on what they submitted, it did not need steep slopes.
Okay, so, I, it's just a reminder, I guess, if you change the word application to evaluation, that comes away, in my mind.
I have one on page six, and that would be on line 13, just to add at the end of the sentence, from the previously approved plan.
Where are we?
At line 13, on page six, and just to add at the end of that, of that sentence, from the previously approved plan.
So, after a good deal of relief?
Yep.
From the previous
Reapproved plan.
Approved.
Approved. I had a question, and this, again, is just reminders, but on, Sabrina, do we have information yet? Page eight, we talk about, you know, the basements and slabs, and the applicant maintains that slabs were not addressed or basements were not addressed, and therefore it was an open issue. You don't have to say it yet, I guess, if you don't know, but I don't know if we've made that determination from minutes and otherwise?
We haven't made the determination, it, it was not expressly discussed, I think it was implied that there would not be basements, that it would be built on a slab.
Okay, well, did they ever give us, I wasn't around then.
I have.
But the drawings, the initial drawings that you guys looked at, did it have, when you had sketches, did
No.
Didn't go into detail?
It was a block on a, on a plane.
Okay. Which is a plan B?
Yeah, and, 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 you know, I think Les was going to try and do some digging in his info, but there was never a discussion about basements, we never discussed the type of grading that we're looking at now, I, I don't want to continue the conversation about this application right now.
Fine.
But
Yep.
We're on the same page.
Okay, good enough, got it. Page nine, line 49, just to join those two sentences I would put in, was unrealistic since, since he postulated that people could not, would not be willing to park, yeah, but just insert since and make it one sentence.
Up on that same page, line 20, do we need a period after townhome complexes?
Yep.
I'm back on page seven.
Seven?
Janice, you with me?
Come on up.
Just a real simple, line 42, could you change the second word from that to who?
Where?
Line 42, page seven.
Right.
Second word, change it from that to who, there are people who. And on page 10
It's the one in person. People who.
And on page 10
Line 30.
Line 25. The end of that line, it says, because they see other attributes that they like about the home, I think if you just strike they and say, because there are attributes they enjoy.
Line 30 on page 10. It's, actually, starts on 29, he pointed out that the units were on average 200 feet larger than previously proposed, that's why we can't have long driveways, but probably it should be 200 square feet.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Yep. All right, anyone else, anything? All right, if not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of April 19 as amended?
No.
Second?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
And for the last minutes, for Janice, to be adopted, the June 19, 2019 minutes. Got a drum roll. Any changes? Issues?
Yeah, I guess not.
Okay, if not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of June 19, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?